I'd like to call order the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board here on May 18, 5:00 PM with the Secretary. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Musage.
Present.
Commissioner Menz.
Here.
Commissioner Alper.
Here.
Commissioner Bennie.
Here.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
President Forney.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll take an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, and then I am going to adjourn before a closed session. So, or excuse me, I'm going to recess.
Um, I think we need a motion.
President, yeah, thank you.
Uh, point of order, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you. I will take a motion then to go into closed session.
I would move that we close the meeting for the purpose of a closed session to discuss a workers' compensation settlement.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. We are recessing.
I picked this up when I was down at Charleston for my.
I'd like to reconvene the full board of Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, and we're going to go directly into open time. So for those who are here, yes.
Point of order, I believe we need to reopen the meeting.
Okay, I'll take a motion to reopen the meeting.
I would move to reopen the meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are then back in business. Okay, so we are in open time right now. Thanks to all of you who want to share your thoughts and ideas with us during the open time. Before we start, I want to provide an abbreviated version of the open time board rules. As individuals wishing to speak may call in before noon the day of the meeting to be placed on the agenda or can sign up at the board meeting prior to the start of open time. I will be calling on people on the signup list only. Open time for public input shall not exceed a total of 15 minutes with the time limit to be allocated by me, the president. Please watch the timer up here to be considerate of others here to speak and stay within your allotted time. During open time, public testimony will be given without debate and only clarifying questions from the board will be allowed. Two types of items are not appropriate at open time. In order to protect the privacy of all individuals, those are pending litigation and personnel issues. Please refrain from commencing on specific personnel issues. We will not tolerate discriminatory and/or harassing words directed at anyone, so please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with that policy. And tonight, we have eight people who wish to speak, and we have a few write-ins. And I will therefore allow two minutes for each person, and the first one is Constance Peppin, and after that is Jennifer Town. Please come forward, Constance, and state your name and address if you're comfortable.
Hi, Constance Peppin, Park District Six. And I just want to say, since you're starting to meet in person again, and I know that only a couple of you will relate to this, I really miss Arlene, Arlene Freed, who was here so often, and especially now that you're back, it's really, I really miss her. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Coalition of Local Bird and Wildlife Conservation Groups to ask you to please put in place immediately a moratorium on any more pesticide treatments in Robert's Bird Sanctuary. They've been doing it now, they treated in April, and they're back in May with helicopters, right during spring migration and nesting of birds. And they're killing a lot of other insects than mosquitoes. They're using not just BTI, but methoprene and spinzopad. And we're, there are, we're killing off the insects that are the lifeblood of birds and wildlife in our cities, and it's not really solving a public health problem. Of course, the reason that they would do this is to make sure that there were no diseased mosquitoes in the city. But we're finding there aren't even mosquitoes at all in the bird sanctuary. They're just all gone because of the repeated treatments. And they're also killing caterpillars, and so we're feeling like we really need, I know a study item has been proposed, and I'm really asking, I don't, it won't hurt the public health, won't hurt anyone, but will save a lot of insects, a lot of birds, if you put a moratorium on during that study period. We also know that you can opt out of these treatments, and you do so at Eloise Butler Wildlife Garden Bird Sanctuary. And we've asked multiple times, why is there a difference between the two bird sanctuaries in the Minneapolis Park system? There are only two bird sanctuaries. One of them gets to get, not have treatments, the other one gets a lot of treatments. We even found a dead bat in the sanctuary last year and took it to the Wildlife Rehabilitation Center, and it had died of starvation. So you know that we're having an ecological crisis, and we have to save birds and bugs in order to save ourselves. So please, we ask, by the way, I sent you a much longer version of this. I hope it was all forwarded to all of you. And I really ask that you do this. It won't threaten the public health. It will really help the ecosystem. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer Town, and then Kenneth Tony.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Town, and I'm a Whittier neighborhood resident and a gardener at the Suleyne Community Garden. And I'm going to be reading a testimonial today written by Christy White, who is a clinical health psychologist here in Minneapolis, Minnesota, that works on the local and national level with environmental sustainability and the Hennepin County Climate Action Plan. So these are Christy's words. Recently, I learned about Hennepin County's plan to pave a ramp to the Greenway through the Suleyne Community Garden despite the neighborhood community's opposition and concerns. I'm writing to express my support of the Suleyne Community Garden's Board of Directors' request to stop the plan to pave through the garden. The Hennepin County's plan to pave through the Suleyne Garden is in direct opposition of the pledges that were made in the Hennepin County Climate Action Plan to work directly with communities that are disproportionately impacted by environmental degradation. There are already significant inequities in vegetation in the tree canopy cover within the Whittier neighborhood, and the area where the Suleyne Garden exists has a tree equity score of 78 compared to some adjacent blocks with scores of 86, 89, 94, and 99 immediately to the north. Thus, to destroy the garden would further perpetuate the inequities that already exist in this area. And I'm aware that Hennepin County has cited the need for an ADA-approved ramp to access the Greenway as the rationale for paving through the Suleyne Garden. I'm in strong support of increasing accessibility to the Greenway. However, I oppose the decision to pave through the garden to address this accessibility. To pave through the garden for increased accessibility is to address one inequity by exacerbating another. There are many options that enable the Suleyne Garden to remain intact while also adding ADA accessibility to the Greenway. There are many community members and members of the Greenway Coalition who are in favor of these alternate plans. The Suleyne Garden should not be designated as an environmental sacrifice zone for purposes of assessing accessibility to the Greenway. Please vote in support of Suleyne Community Garden and follow the lead of community members who are advocating for its protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Kenneth Tony, and then after that is Spencer Polk.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I came today to introduce myself, Kenneth Tony, in a nonprofit organization called Minneapolis North Youth Football Association. It's a nonprofit organization. I founded it to help raise funds for the youth in the community, give them activities, and a positive, with some positive leadership, mainly through football and cheerleading. We right now are having a camp at North Commons Park. I've coached at North Commons Park for about seven years now. I lived in the Jordan neighborhood. I have since moved from there a few years ago, but I still like to come back to the community and give back. Our nonprofit will be strictly to fund the youth in the community and with sports and activities like football and cheerleading. If we have extra, we'll try and spread the funds throughout the Minneapolis area, the North Minneapolis area. I started this because the tackle football has diminished in the city, and for our kids to be able to keep playing, we had to go to different places, and it costs money to get into these leagues, and we get to these leagues, and these kids have just about everything you could think of, brand-new everything. Our kids are playing in used equipment. Sometimes I felt like it wasn't even safe for them to use. So I took it upon myself to start this nonprofit to make sure that it's something that's never going to continue to happen. So that's why I came today, just to introduce myself and Minneapolis North Youth Football Association.
Thank you.
Also, I'm here because I want your guys' support. I want to be able to work with the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board on doing better for the kids in North Minneapolis.
Thank you so much, Kenneth. Oh, do we have a staff person who would like to speak with Mr. Polk or Mr. Tony afterwards? Is Mimi around? Yeah. So over there, we have our Assistant Superintendent Kelb, who, if you have any further questions, you could connect with. Then we have Spencer Polk, and after that is Pat Smith.
Hello, thanks for having me, Commissioners. My name is Spencer Polk, and I'm here today to advocate for car-free parkways on Rest River Road this summer. I'm a resident of East Phillips, which is in District Three, and includes much of the parkway. I am also a member of the Southside Green Zone Council, a citizen advisory group representing neighborhoods that face combined impacts of environmental pollution and racial, political, and economic marginalization, resident and city collaboration to support community health, economic development, and the environment. This includes neighborhoods near the parkway like Seward, Phillips, and Cedar Riverside. I'm also an advocacy intern with Bike MN, who has supported citizens advocating for bike-free parkways. During the beginning days of COVID, car-free parkways created community and supported recreation for people of all ages and abilities. Last year, everyone came out at the opportunity to experience the parkway, totally free to navigate without the fear of cars. It felt so empowering for me personally. Our recommendation would be to have two weeks a month from June to August car-free. Additionally, Worldwide Car-Free Day is September 22nd, and I would encourage making the parkways car-free for these days. Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider and support this idea.
Thank you, Spencer. We have Pat Smith, and then Sean Conady. After Pat. Welcome, Pat.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Park Board, and staff. My name is Pat Smith, and I represent Playball Minneapolis. Minneapolis has fewer percentage of households with kids than New York, Chicago, or Philadelphia. Lakeville, Shakopee, Woodbury, Brickland Park have twice the percentage of kids than Minneapolis, and we're heading in the wrong direction. The percentage of families in Minneapolis has dropped 25% in the last 25 years. The number of students in Minneapolis Public Schools has dropped 32% in the last 20 years. We're competing for families and kids, and we're losing. When I was on the Southwest CAC Master Plan, I met a Minneapolis dad who was maintaining Skippy Field in St. Louis Park. This is a Minneapolis resident maintaining a field in St. Louis Park. He said one quarter to a third of his teams are kids from Minneapolis. He said the number one reason was the condition of the fields in Minneapolis. Every community around Southwest Minneapolis and probably other places in Minneapolis has baseball and softball facilities, and I made a handout for everybody, but this is what we're competing with. The Park Board recently adopted four master park plans, and together they eliminated close to 40% of the ball diamonds in Minneapolis. No one looked at it from a citywide perspective to determine if that's the appropriate number of ball diamonds to be eliminated based on supply and demand. This is one of the main reasons why we think a Diamond Sports TAC should be created. We're requesting the Park Board to support a Diamond Sports TAC similar to what you did for skateboarders in 2017. And thank you for listening.
And if you'd like to hand, Dawn, who's in the back there, you could just hand to her your, to be passed out to all of us. Thank you, Pat.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, Sean, Conady, and then after that is Michael, and I'm sure I'm not positive your spelling there. I think it might be PEX, but I'm not positive about that for Michael.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Thank you. So I'm here to mark a milestone. On Saturday, we passed a total of 10,000 pounds of plastic trash that community volunteers have removed by hand from Lake Hiawatha. So that's equivalent to 10 City of Minneapolis dump trucks full of plastic trash. It represents thousands of hours of labor to preserve an ecology, a lake, and its wildlife that should be sacred. In 2015, we presented a petition to the city and NPRB asking for comprehensive stormwater treatment for the 920-acre pipe shed that discharges tons of trash and pollution unfiltered into Lake Hiawatha. The NPRB and the City of Minneapolis have had eight years to figure this out, and as we pass this, pass this milestone of 10,000 pounds, still nothing has changed. Three different park boards have failed to act. We are still holding out hope for the present board. Despite our monumental effort, trash and other pollution still chokes the lakes. So some interesting facts about the 500 full bag contractor bags of trash. It's 91.5% plastic. Each bag weighs 20 pounds before it gets counted, contains an average of 1,267 items, and takes an average of three to four hours of pretty hard labor to get it. Most common things are wrappers, plastic film, plastic bottles, styrofoam, and plastic shards. 3,948 toxic trash items have been removed, including 2,264 disposable lighters, also spray paint cans, bug spray, pesticides, batteries, air fresheners, adhesives, automotive fluids, 3,000, okay, and 1,133 hypodermic needles, 266 used diapers. So those are some facts. So we need, obviously, we need to address the trash problem at Lake Hiawatha, and now, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Michael, and then after that is David Klop. Welcome, Michael.
Hello, Park Board. How's everybody doing today? My name is Michael Peoples, better known as Coach Pop at North Commons Park. I'm here to just relate to what Coach is saying. I'm sorry. We have a good group of kids at North Commons Park, and they deserve everything they get. I'm sorry for being so emotional, but them are my kids, and they're good kids. That's why we have football camp to keep them from walking up and down Broadway. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we took them to the Vikings camp, and the Vikings people came up there to say, they were the best behaved kids they ever seen. They just get to be a part of where they live. So we appreciate it. If y'all help us, help them, this is village. I want y'all to be a part of the village. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Michael.
I'm sorry for.
No, we certainly understand, and we appreciate your advocacy. And David Klop, you're up.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I've got a couple of things I want to talk about. One, I was going to talk about the Veterans Memorial at Padilla McCoska. The bell and the ship's wheel, that's important to veterans. It's important to Minnesota. It's our history. I'm urging the Park Board to restore that bell and ship's wheel that was put on that memorial to a full extent. Maybe it can go into the new pavilion. It's important to all of us that had family members that served in the U.S. Navy. The second thing I was going to talk about are my Purple Martins. And I have hundreds of Purple Martins in Wisconsin. in Wisconsin. I have houses here in the city. They have nothing to eat. There's no food for them. There's no insects left. The mosquito control has got to change. We can't just sit back and kill bees and butterflies and dragonflies and our pollinators. You guys are leaders of the best park system in the country. You're a progressive city. We need to take the front row on this with Paris and New York and Edmonton and all these other cities that are saying bad things about herbicides and pesticides with our pollinators, our bees, our dragonflies. Let's say yes to our birds. And we do have alternatives. I know we have a bird sanctuary down there at Roberts right next to that beautiful orchestra hall, and there are natural ways to control mosquitoes. For one, we can do a lot of education. People don't get bit so much when they wear white clothes, when they don't wear real sweet perfumes. And garlic is a really good deterrent. It's all natural. I think we should try that. Houston does that. They spray things. A little, the garlic smell lasts very shortly, and then there's no bugs, and it's all natural, and we can have birds and bees and everything too. Thank you very much.
David, in regards to the bell, I'm going to refer you to Assistant Superintendent Schroeder over here and give you a little update on what's going on there.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I am going to close the open time and recess again for our closed session.
I would make a motion to close the meeting for the purpose of discussing a proposed workers' compensation settlement.
Second.
I can, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close, we then are recessing.
What?
I said, I don't think we're even gonna be there. Mike, can you feel that?
Can I what?
Can you feel this?
Feel, no, feel what?
Does it like the chair bother me? When I walk by, I do like this to your turn.
Are we all assembled? No.
Nope. People into the restroom.
We do have a quorum, not least, so. I am gonna reconvene, so I'd like to reopen the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board.
Was that a motion?
I would move to reopen the meeting of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are reconvened. Okay. So, first of all, did we get an approval of the minutes? No. We don't have any minutes, but we do have, we did approve the agenda, right? Okay, thank you. Okay, but no minutes. Okay, so we do have reports from officers. Superintendent Bangora.
This will be, thank you, Jennifer. I'll bring a picture up real quick. Let's be very brief. I just wanted to give this, and this is just a very brief report. So, it's with great sadness that I share the passing of Jody Washington, Senior. He was a full-time parkkeeper at North Mississippi and passed away, passed away last Sunday at the age of 56. Jody was employed with the NPRB since 2013, or 2003. Jody was a son, husband, father, grandfather, uncle, and a great friend to many, and was well-loved and respected by his coworkers. This has been heartbreaking to, for the majority of our operations staff. Many of them have worked with both Jody Senior and his son, Jody Junior, for years. So, we just ask to please keep Jody Washington, Junior, and all of their family and your thoughts at this time. There is a memorial service this Saturday, May 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the New Beginnings Baptist Church at 4301 First Avenue South. And so, I just wanted to make sure I addressed a very difficult situation for our park system. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bangora, for sharing, and our condolences to Jody's family, and as well as everyone he worked with. Reports then from our appointees outside boards and commissioners, commissioners, excuse me, and committees. Do anybody, does anybody share? No? Okay. Okay, not seeing anybody, then putting their lights on and everything. Move to the consent agenda. Is there any items that people would like to pull for discussion, or should we move the consent agenda? Oh, yes, Commissioner Abene.
Thank you, President Forney. I'd like to pull Resolution 2022-201.
201, okay. Pulling that item. I'll take a motion then, too.
I would move items 50/22, 2022-191, 2022-198, 2022-183, 2022-195, 2022-197, and 2022-200.
Second?
All those in favor of consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. All right, and so, we will pull for discussion Resolution 2022-201. If you'd like to read that.
I believe we need to move it before we discuss it. I'm sorry, point of, point of order. I would like to move item 2022-201.
If somebody would read the resolution, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. It's a resolution authorizing the superintendent to submit a 2023 proposal to the Legislative Citizen Commission on Minnesota Resources, LCCMR, from the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund, E R E N R T F, for four projects.
For four. Thank you. Okay. Yes, Commissioner Abene.
Yes, I don't know if we have a presentation on this or not. I, I think this is great, and if we do have a presentation, I would be happy to see it. And I have a particular, well, I love the bio blitzes, but I also, the second item as well is my primary interest.
Thank you. Director Iverson, take it away, if you have something.
Commissioner Abene, I do have a very brief presentation. There's not a whole lot of detail on the different projects, but I can expand a little bit on that if you wanted to know more about things specifically. So, the presentation is actually geared for the two grant programs that were coming before you with tonight, one of which you've now already passed. But, so there's two resolutions here, so I'll kind of talk about them both. Oops, let me just do that. All right. So, there are two annual state competitive environmental grant programs. That's a lot of adjectives. But, one of them is funded through the lottery, and that's the LCCMR, and the other is funded through the Clean Water Land and Legacy Amendment of 2008, and that's the Lissard-Sams one. This year, they have normalized the deadline, so they have the same deadline. That's not always been true in the past. These are coming before you at this stage, rather than just as a grant acceptance, because both programs do require there to be a resolution of support from the body in order to go forward. So, we need that in hand when we submit. We've annually submitted to LCCMR for many, many, many years. I think, I can't remember a year in the time I've been here where we haven't. We've been successful three years in a row now, so that's a good track record. We have historically submitted to Lissard-Sams, but haven't in the past few years in order to get a couple of projects complete and, and kind of off of our dockets. The Lissard-Sams is a, is a more challenging grant program, so we kind of took a pause on that. I know that the request or presentation was specifically on LCCMR, but really quickly, on Lissard-Sams, these are larger grants, they're a bit more capital-focused, and the grant application is highly detailed, complex, and it's ecologically focused. Like, this year, they want to know, what's your target species, and how many more of them are we gonna have if we do the project? So, it's really scientifically based. We didn't think we were positioned to be able to do this this year, but actually, the ongoing turtle study is allowing us to identify some target species at Lake Nacomis and start to talk about how we can improve habitat there, based on that scientific study. So, it's a really good example of, of work that environmental management is doing with researchers in the field that's leading to us to be able to potentially justify going after this grant. So, I think there are very few options for us right now with the Lissard-Sams grant, and the shoreline enhancements is a good one, because we have a good handle on costs, we know the lake pretty well. Sometimes, these grant programs really like a phase two, so we can show them that we're continuing on with that state money. LCCMR is a, is a program that has a wide range in grant amounts. These can be as small as, you know, less than $100,000, all the way up to millions. And then, it's also a much broader topical area, research, education, also some capital, variety of things. The application's much more straightforward, and where we are with LCCMR this year is a little unusual, is that the Senate and the House have both passed LCCMR bills because the LCCMR committee was unable to come to a consensus recommendation. So, it fell to the legislators themselves. They have both passed bills, those bills are different. We have a project in both of those bills at different amounts. So, it's gonna go to conference committee, which means that some of last year's projects that we submitted are still technically in play. So, in this case, and again, considering kind of staff capacity, we can submit for multiple projects here, because it's not as heavy a lift, as long as most of them are resubmittals. So, the projects that we're proposing are the educational bio blitzes, and this is the idea would be led by Mary Lynn Poulshur in environmental education, and her group is basically bringing kids and adults into our regional parks to do a bio blitz, which is basically, for a certain time period, you try to identify every living thing you can see in the park. And what it does is it creates baseline ecological data for us. It's the bugs, and the mammals, and the, and the trees, and the plants, and everything, the mushrooms, you know, so we just, we try to get that baseline ecological data. That will actually help us in the future with Lissard-Sams, because we'll have baseline ecological data for regional parks. It also connects people to nature and potential nature careers in science and in environmental management. Enhancing the flyway neighborhood connectivity, that is a project that comes out of the ecological system plan, which specifically identifies ways to look at the big habitat corridors in our system, and start to create other habitat corridors through our neighborhoods. And so, this request is, is another resubmittal. I think we keep getting closer every time. It's about looking at a neighborhood-to-flyway corridor that could use street trees, boulevards, private properties, school land, in order to make a habitat link into our core neighborhoods, into the central neighborhoods from the Mississippi River. Bohemian Flats restoration is about a five-acre savanna, oak savanna restoration on a site that's been hammered, because a lot of construction has been laid down on Bohemian Flats over the years. We think the construction is done. Tyler Pedersen here in the, in the, in the room is leading that grant program. This is the one that is in both of the LCCMR bills. So, we'd love for you to approve that going forward. If something goes horribly wrong, we will submit this project. If it is funded in the current legislative session, we'll withdraw it. And then, the last one is in Above the Falls land acquisition program. We're essentially gonna ask for a certain amount of money to buy parcels as they become available in Above the Falls. And we're not gonna limit that to a single parcel here and there. We're gonna give them a parcel list that includes every remaining available property in Above the Falls. We need to be able to act quickly and flexibly. We did get money from Lissard-Sams for a single parcel, and that's problematic if it goes away, and you gotta try to move that grant money somewhere else. So, we're going to try to kind of create a program that's in a way complimentary to what the Met Council is doing for the system as a whole, but doesn't really work for us because of their rules around how you get in, and it's a first-come, first-served program with the Met Council. So, those are the four. I'm happy to answer any questions in more detail on any of those. President Forney.
Thank you. Commissioner Abene.
Thank you. That's exactly what I, kind of update our information I was hoping to hear. Thank you so much, and it helped to understand why the projects were, you know, in, proposed previously, and what they are, where they are in the cycle. The only other thing that I wanted to do, and I, I think this is all great, I hope we get, get to move forward with all of them, and I liked the one that we already passed, the turtle one at Lake Harriet, that's awesome. But, I just wanted to make some comments, and I actually had some, just attention, you know, flagged to me by some, some of our friends in the Minneapolis Audubon chapter. But, this is particularly on the enhancing habitat connectivity one, and I think that's such a great thing, and to, to have that view of our city as a system of connected habitat as much as possible, to me, is just thrilling. But, I just want to say that this, this is a wonderful project, and as we prioritize habitat, I hope we'll consider that all of Minneapolis, not just the Minneapolis River Corridor, is, is the Minneapolis fly, Mississippi. Minneapolis, not just the Minneapolis River Corridor, is the Minneapolis Fly, Mississippi Flyway. So every neighborhood, park, tree, boulevard, and the city is already part of this internationally significant bird migratory route. A potential alternative framing might be enhancing habitat connectivity within the Mississippi Flyway, which I think is the spirit of what's in this proposal. So I'm not suggesting an amendment, but I just wanted to make that comment. You know, we live, here, we take the Mississippi kind of for granted, but it's like living, it's a famous river right up there with the Nile and the Rhine and many others. And that flyway is part of our whole city here. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions people have to that? Okay. All right, then regarding Resolution 2022-201, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, so on to standing committees, on to our planning committee. I believe that Commissioner Bennie, I overheard that you were going to move this.
Thank you. On behalf of the planning committee, I'd like to move that the board adopt Resolution 2022-187, a resolution approving the concept plan for Columbia Park Playground replacement of removed equipment.
Great. Seconded. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. All right. I don't see any lights. All those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, on to Administration and Finance Committee. Who is going to be speaking on behalf?
I would love to.
Commissioner Thompson.
On behalf of Administration and Finance Committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2022-188, a resolution approving a three-year lease agreement with the Minnesota School of Botanical Art for Space in the Longfellow House, set to expire on December 31, 2024.
Second. Thank you. Any questions on this? This is a lease agreement, so I believe that we need to have a roll call vote. Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Bennie.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Menz.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
President Forney.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
Thank you. That motion carries. And so on to the next resolution.
Yes, I would also like to move 2022-168, a resolution approving an agreement with JLD Group LLP for five operating seasons, beginning June 1, 2022, and expiring December 31, 2026, for Theodore Worth and Hiawatha Golf Clubs.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. I don't see any lights. No questions on this. Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of order, I believe this is another lease. Don't we need to?
I don't think it's a lease. That's not all I am.
We're on the concession agreement. The attachments are all identified as a lease.
We've always considered leases.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Okay, so, Secretary, please call a roll.
Commissioner Bennie.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Menz.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye.
Thank you. President Forney.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
Great. On to the next resolution.
I will also move Resolution 2022-170, a resolution approving a concession agreement with GC Ventures to provide food and beverage concessions services at Columbia Golf Club and Gross National Golf Club.
Second. Great. I am not seeing any lights, and I'm going to assume that this also is a roll call vote. Okay. Secretary, would you please?
It's not necessary.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Point of inquiry. Reading through the documents, the documents are identified as a lease.
Well, just to be safe, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Secretary Ringel. Oh, we've got a question now.
One second. Commissioner Bennie.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Menz.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
President Forney.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
Thank you. Okay, on to the next resolution.
There's so many from us tonight. A Resolution 2022-186, a resolution approving agreement with Mississippi Park Connection for installation, operation, and maintenance of paddle-share stations at North Mississippi Regional Park, Boom Island, located within the Central Mississippi Riverfront Regional Park, Graco Park within Above the Falls Regional Park, and Mississippi Gorge Regional Park.
Second. Thank you. I'm not seeing any lights, right? And this is not a lease? I hope I got that one right this time. Anyway, all those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. On to another one.
Okay, Resolution 2022-189, a resolution approving three one-year license agreements with Lime Spin and Lift, respectively, for authorization to place equipment on MPRB property and permission to operate shared bike and scooter programs throughout the Minneapolis park system.
Secretary Ringel.
I'll wait for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, now, Secretary Ringel.
Thank you, President Forney. Co-chair Schaefer has asked me for confirmation on the amendment. So this one was amended at committee. I just want to make sure that the board recalls that. I was hoping to be able to bring up the amendment.
Commissioner Schaefer, do you have it in front of yourself?
I have it pulled up. Would you like me to read it?
Please.
Yes, thank you.
So the amendment that was approved in committee that we would then be voting on this evening as part of the full resolution in front of us, it says, whereas MPRB trails have a speed limit of 10 miles per hour, whereas the proximity of ped bike trails can be close or even share a trail create pedestrian safety concerns with low-power vehicles, and whereas our park's future includes a denser city and an older population per the Parks for All Plan, resolved MPRB staff will implement a pilot speed limit program with SBSP using geo-fencing capabilities in a minimum of two locations as part of the 2022 MPRB scooter operations plan. When agreements with SBSP and the MPRB are effective on parkland this season, and resolved to reduce speed zones for scooters will be implemented for the 2022 season in collaboration with partnering jurisdictions. The two target areas are along West River Parkway and Central Riverfront Regional Park between Third Avenue South and 13th Avenue South, and on Victory Memorial Parkway. MPRB staff have flexibility to adjust the length of these target areas or add additional test areas. Prior to the 2023 license renewal, these pilots will be assessed by MPRB staff for potential expansion.
Great, thank you for reading that, Commissioner Musich. So on the amended resolution, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. On to the next resolution. Next and final.
Final one from Ed and Finance. I would like to share Resolution 2022-193, the resolution approving 2023 to 2026 strategic directions and performance goals, and adopting priority strategies from Parks for All, Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board's Comprehensive Plan 2021 to 2036 for the same four-year time period.
Second. Great. Any discussion on this item? Yes, Commissioner Bennie.
Thank you, President Forney. I don't mean this to be gratuitous, but I just really appreciate all the hard work that went into this, and all the work by this group, too. I think this is a pretty great set of goals for the next four-year period, and I'm pretty excited to get to participate in their realization. So thank you.
Well put. Anybody else have any comments? Well, I will do that. I don't think it's gratuitous at all. I think we can applaud ourselves, too, for coming to this conclusion. So thank you all. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. So we have some wonderful study items. The first one is the discussion of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board's 2022 Park Score Ranking, as determined by the Trust for Public Land. And Director Arvison, good to have you here again, and take it away.
Thank you, President Forney. Commissioners.
So, yes, I was asked to give an overview about the Trust for Public Land Park Score Rankings. So this evening, I'm going to kind of talk about sort of what the rankings look like this year, but also talk a little about how those rankings are constructed, and then provide a window maybe into some of the conversations that we have with Trust for Public Land on an ongoing basis about their rankings. So I think I'll probably start with the bad news that everybody already knows, right, the bad news, that Minneapolis came in this year at number five. It's probably most painful that St. Paul is still number two. But what I want to do when we look at the top five is actually think about this in a little different way, because between spot number two and number five, there's a 1.2 gap out of 100 points, and that's a smaller gap than the gap between the next city below us. So this top tier are relatively indistinguishable from each other. So let's make that clear right off the bat. St. Paul, Arlington, Cincinnati, and Minneapolis, these are very, very fine differences, and in some cases, they are rounding errors. Not errors, but they are just rounding changes. So let's keep that in mind as we go through. And I'm going to talk about how the score comes to be. So there are five different scores, and they're all average, just on a straight-up, you know, you add them together, you divide by five. And those scores are acreage, access, investment, amenities, and equity. And equity is the new kid on the block for Trust for Public Land. It's, this is the second year of the equity metric. Many of these scores, you know, for instance, the acreage score being a 62, they are conglomerations of other scores. So they're sort of averages of averages. So when I talk about how things get rounded, that gets compounded when you look in this. So acreage is actually a measure of two different acreage scores that get averaged into what makes that number 62. And I'm happy to take questions if we want to dig into that a little bit deeper, so I'm just going to stay on the surface for now, but just remember that these are all kind of averages of averages, but that's how the score works. And the other helpful tools that Trust for Public Land puts out is, for instance, this map. And the color coding on this map is basically if you're green, you're within a 10-minute walk shed of a park, and then the purple areas are not. And the darkest purple are what they consider their, like, highest priority areas that we should really be dealing with. And you can see in Minneapolis, there's a couple of small purple areas that still exist. There are really like four or five of them. We actually got rid of one of them this year. There used to be a big purple blotch in the middle of the North Loop, which is no longer there. So this map is in some ways a guide for cities. It's meant as a guide for cities about where you really need to be looking for better park access or connection. If we were to overlay this map with where our park search areas are in the master plans and in the comprehensive plan, it would align pretty closely. So we do understand and agree with Trust for Public Land on the general need with this map. So these maps here are a little bit more complicated, but these are the equity maps. And what you're seeing is there's an underlying color field that's sort of in that orangey-gray range, and the orangier an area is means that the more park acreage it has per capita in that census tract. And then the grayer, or the lighter orange an area is, the less park acreage it has. So you can see that along the chain of lakes and even in far north Minneapolis, it's very orange, whereas if we get into the upper south, in particular, the acreage just isn't there, the same way it is in other cities. Now, one thing we have asked for Trust for Public Land for is, like, what is the range? Like, what, how many acres per capita are we talking about at the bright orange level versus the not? And we haven't been provided that information yet, or how that compares numerically with other cities. So I'm just going to put that caveat on there. We're still working with them on that underlying data. The other piece that you're seeing here is that what they are tracking with their equity metric is disparities. So there, our score is based on the disparities between, on one hand, the highest income and the lowest-income neighborhoods, and on the other hand, the highest percent people of color neighborhoods and the lowest percent people of color neighborhoods. So the map on the left, which says race, is identifying what they show are the highest percent people of color neighborhoods in blue, and the lowest percent people of color neighborhoods, or the whitest neighborhoods, in orange, with the outlining with the little dots, right? So when we talk about disparity in that equity metric, they are not looking at the portions of our city that are not outlined in those blue or orange outlines. They are only looking at what do we have in the blue versus what do we have in the orange. And so that's done for race on the left-hand map and for income on the right-hand map. And then those two scores are combined to make that equity average. So that's kind of how they're looking at. So again, if we're in the middle area, or if there was a more uniform racial makeup or income makeup in the city, then those census tracts would be smaller, or would be, there would be fewer of them, because they're really looking at the extremes and comparing the extremes. I know it's a headful to get around. So I'm going to do now is I'm going to just share some thoughts that I have and that staff have on the Park Score metrics as they came out this year. And again, these thoughts are not meant to in any way kind of undermine what Trust for Public Land is doing. I think this is an important tool. I really do. And I think the importance of the tool is about having all the cities really be looking at this and trying to improve, you know, not just the top five cities, but the cities down at like number 32, like, there's work that they can do. And the Park Score will help them identify kind of where those things can go. But I have a couple of thoughts about how this relates to our situation specifically. So on the acreage score, it's important to note that the acreage score is a combination of the total acreage as a percent of the city's size and the median park size in our system. So they're basically looking at how much parkland do you have, and how big are your parks? Like, those are the two big things. Well, our largest park, Worth Park, is not included in either measure here, because it is majority outside the city limits. And that has been the case since forever, but it's a challenge. It is true nationwide. There are parks that have large parks outside their city limits that they still manage, and yet those are not included in the Park Score total. So even the portion of Worth that is within the city is not included in the median park total, certainly. So some questions about how the acreage is calculated. In terms of access, the purchase of the North Loop site, as I mentioned before, it eliminated like one of our purple areas, which is really great, that we got rid of one of those park gaps right away. That increased our park access percentage within the city to 98.4% of people are within a 10-minute walk of a park. So that's really great. But of course, that rounds down to 98 in this score. So we actually didn't see an access improvement here, because that is the access score. So the percentage, you can see there, it is still at 98, and it actually is there. So if there were a few more people that were near that park in the North Loop, we actually would have gotten another point here. So this is why I say that sometimes you're cutting it pretty fine between these top, these tops cities. With regard to investment, so the investment is, it looks at how much is spent on parkland per capita in a city. And here's where we get into some, like, math that's way probably even beyond me and exactly why it's done. But I just want to point out that there are 10 cities in the nation that actually get a perfect score of 100, including ourselves, which is great. We invest a lot in parks. We actually sit fourth on that list, behind San Francisco, who's a huge outlier, and then three cities that are pretty close. And then the 10th on that list is Atlanta, and they invest $206 per capita. So we're investing one and a half times per capita than some of those other cities that are actually getting the same 100% score as we are. So there's not, there's not much difference, again, in those top 10 cities in terms of the points that we're getting, but there certainly is a difference in what the investment actually is. And then I want to talk about amenities. So amenities, the way that that is scored is that the Trust for Public Land has six different amenities, and they look at the number of that thing per 1,000 or 10,000 people. And those six different And those six different amenities are meant to be representative of a variety of recreational options across the board. And I should've put them down here, and I wouldn't test myself to do them offhand, but it is recreation centers, it's basketball hoops, splash pads, dog parks. And I'm gonna have to look up the others. Bathrooms, right? Because there, on the screen, there's an issue with the bathrooms. So this year, Trust for Public Land clarified how we should be counting bathrooms. And I actually think this is a really good idea to clarify it this way, because as agencies like ourselves transition to gender-neutral bathrooms, how do we start, how do we count them? Are we counting stalls? Are we counting like, how do you count them? So what Trust for Public Land has said is what you need to do is count a building that has a bathroom. So regardless of the number of stalls and bathrooms in a building, you would count the building having a public bathroom. So headquarters is one. We call this one bathroom. And whether that mess, so that reduced the number that we have been historically submitting under the bathrooms category. And it reduced our per capita and reduced our score from previous years. Whether that was consistently implemented across the 100 cities that respond to Park Score, I cannot know. It was very much in the fine print, and we took it very seriously. So I just wanna note that we haven't eliminated bathrooms, we're just being forced to count them differently. And then the last thought I have is about equity. So the way that Trust for Public Land is tracking equity, as I mentioned, is they're looking at two factors that can essentially be easily mapped. So the Trust for Public Land can look at census data, and they can look at our parks layer data, and they can map these things. They can look at access disparity, and they can look at acreage disparity. And I should say, there is no access disparity, right? We have 90% of all Minneapolitans, regardless of income or race, are within a 10-minute walk of a park. It's the acreage disparity where we are not as successful. It is because parks in the upper south and on the north side, in particular, are smaller in size than those parks in other parts of town. And I think there's some research that has been done and is going on about why historically that has happened, but it is the fact. However, it does not take into account potential disparities in investment in parks, in programming in parks, or in maintenance in parks. And so my little soapbox that Superintendent Bangora has heard multiple times is, if you had a park where they had exactly the same acreage and access in two different parts of town with different race and wealth makeup, and if they did not do any programming or maintenance or capital investment on one side of the town, and put it all into the other wealthier, whiter side of town, that city would score very high on equity under the Trust for Public Land metrics right now. So we feel like it's not, there's a four-legged stool around equity when it comes to parks. Yeah, you gotta have the parks, but you also need to do the investment and the maintenance and the programmatic stuff equitably. And we've put a lot of effort into doing that, and we've even got ordinance language that requires us to do that, and that's not reflected in the TPL metric now. So we have asked TPL last year and again this year, as they've introduced this equity metric, we have said at staff-level conversations that we fully endorse that there's an equity metric mixed up in this, we just think they need to go further. We think they need to look at other factors that really determine how people are gonna interact with parks. Because if you've got three acres of unmoned turf with nothing to do, is that really equitable park access? So some takeaways maybe from this presentation, and then I'll turn it back over to President Forney for questions. Remember that the cities that are ranked between two and five are practically indistinguishable in terms of the numbers of the scores. These are averages of averages, and we're talking about fine-grained things that could tip on whether we counted bathrooms properly or not. So two to five, it is a really fine margin, and there are much bigger gaps between cities throughout the Park Score metrics. We remain solidly in the top tier of these cities. There is a gap below us. The top six are different than the parks that are below them. So just, that's the big thing, you know, and it took me a while to get used to the like number five, because I've submitted a bunch of number ones, right? But that's the fact, like there's a top tier and we are among the top tier. And the top tier is gonna shift within itself a little bit. Our quote "drop in rankings" is attributable over the last couple of years largely to the introduction of what is probably an incomplete equity metric. That equity metric does identify gaps that we know about and have planned to close. So we have plans to expand Cleveland Park on the north side, to expand Willard Park on the north side, to buy up the riverfront on north and northeast Minneapolis. The Grand Round's missing link runs right through one of their purple blobs. So we know about this and we're working on it. It takes a long time. And also, these equity metrics do not acknowledge our funding equity metrics that are in place for the regional and neighborhood park system for capital investment and also for recreation center funding. So those things are not accounted for. So the fourth point I would make is that, yes, other cities are improving. You know, Cincinnati was a big mover because they codified a deal with public schools to make those acts accessible to the public. That's a good thing. So the fact that folks have been looking up at us for a bunch of years, they have found strategic ways to provide their citizens with better parks. And I think that ultimately is the point of Park Score, and we are still a leader in this, because as the equity metrics evolve, we're having those detailed conversations with Trust for Public Land about how some of the things that we're doing on these other fronts might actually filter their way in there. So that's all I have. I will turn it back over to President Forney to take whatever questions or discussion you'd like. Thank you.
Yeah, well, so part of the reason, just so I get this completely straight, that the equity, we're kind of hurt on that one, is because Minneapolis is so segregated and just because of historical issues. Is that accurate?
President Forney, Commissioner Olson, short answer is yes. There, we have, there's a lot of census blocks in both of the categories, and there's more acreage in the ones that are the whiter, wealthier neighborhoods. And there's a lot of historical context around that. But I also wanna stress that it's about that the access, there isn't an issue. Like equitable access to our parks in terms of 98% of people being within a walking distance, there is no disparity in Minneapolis, according to TPL's metrics. And I'm gonna even argue the other way and say, however, we got folks that don't really have good access to water. So I'm not gonna take that as like, cool, we're done, everybody's near a park, because I think in some cases, the type of park does matter. And so that's why we continue to work on the Upper River. It's the park acreage that we really do have a disparity. So the parks are there throughout the system, well-organized and touchable by everyone, but we have less acreage in certain parts of town.
And so the amenities, you mentioned specifically basketball courts are counted? Are other sports courts counted, or just basketball?
It's just basketball. Basketball's the only court that is, so President Forney, Commissioner Olson, the Trust for Public Land collects a lot of data from us, so like they are asking about tennis courts and pickleball courts and all sorts of different things. But there are only six of those facility types that we submit that actually come into the score. Now, you can get the data and see how every city does on pickleball courts, but it doesn't go into our score. And so basketball hoops, and actually, we're counting hoops, not courts, under this metric. So the half would count as a hoop. That's the only court facility.
All right. Just another reason to build more basketball courts, y'all.
Yes, thank you, President Forney. I have a couple of questions. So with amenities, are they defining trees as an amenity or birds as an amenity?
President Forney, Commissioner Thompson, not in the scoring. We do submit data on what they call designed parks versus natural parks. And we do submit a lot of data on the urban forestry and the parked trees in our system, but that does not filter its way into the scoring metrics.
Do we in any way allow TPL's version of what an amenity is to drive our thinking just to get our score up when maybe we should be keeping trees even if it doesn't help us? You know what I mean? Does that make sense?
Yeah, President Forney, Commissioner Thompson, I would say that's as a resounding no. We do not implement amenities and we do not do master planning in an effort to up our Park Score. We do community-centered master planning, and so all of this happens with a grain of salt that we are, what we're chasing is serving the community the best we can, we're not chasing these metrics. And yeah, that's about as firmly as I can say it.
That's good to hear. I have one last question. If you know of the history of the city, looking at those maps, it's not that surprising to me that like the industrial zones are where there are no parks. You mentioned expanding Cleveland Park, which of course is up by where I live. How would we do something like that? Would it be buying land? I know it's surrounded by houses. So what would, just out of curiosity, what would that look like to expand in areas that are really kind of densely populated?
Yep. President Forney, Commissioner Thompson, and it's a good question, and during the service area master planning effort for the north side and for all the other areas, we had conversations with folks all along about additional parkland. And there was always a tension between, you know, yeah, additional parkland often means that you're taking something else out, and that might be housing, commercial, like who knows what. And so we were judicious about it, but we also felt that there were strategic locations, often with other external factors, that we needed to take into account. So at Cleveland Park, there was a big push by actually neighbors and the neighborhood organization and the city and county to opt for a master plan that shows an expansion of that park that would remove several houses on Penn Avenue, which have historically been very problematic. And then the county and city have been trying to partner for a long time to redevelop the corner of Penn and, yeah, so, because there's some issues there too. And so park expansion there actually solves some other community goals in a mutually beneficial way for community members that are living right there. We would not and did not in our master planning sort of willy-nilly say, we're gonna take this block and turn it into a park, which is also why, it's also an example of how we're not chasing the equity score. Because I think sometimes taking housing in certain areas to provide a park in order to have the acreage be upped could actually be more detrimental to the community than finding other ways to connect people to parks, or doing enhanced programming or other things like that, which is why I think that there's other legs to that equity stool that have to come in.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And it's a real shame they don't count Worth. That's kind of ridiculous. Thanks.
Thanks. I'm really grateful for you explaining the score and talking more about it and what goes into it, which sounds like a lot of work to submit those applications. So I had just a few questions. You mentioned upper south Minneapolis and lack of acreage, with the equity score and the acreage disparity in particular. So I just had a few questions about that. Does that acreage take into account acreage that is park-like versus park-owned? And the reason I bring that up is because there are a few parcels right around 26th Street and Hayawatha that are owned by different governmental entities, but not by us, Hanpan County and the Metropolitan Council. I'm guessing they don't, but do you know?
President Forney, Commissioner Alper, yes and no. There are non-park board facilities that, and in any city, there could be non-city facilities included as parks in the Park Score if there is an agreement that those areas are open for some kind of public use. And the best example of that is the Minneapolis Public Schools. So all of those schoolyards are open for the public use when school's not in session. So all of those schools actually count as parkland within our TPL system. The Midtown Greenway has always counted as parkland, even before it became a designated regional trail, because it's clearly a facility that is open to the public. The lands that you're referring to, I think the way that those could be counted, or the only way they could be counted, is we would have to demonstrate some kind of agreement that would allow park use on those facilities. And then TPL would bring that into their mapping, and it would shift everything around.
Yeah, I'd love to think about what we could do with those parcels, just I feel like they're neglected pieces of land right now, especially that Met Council parcel. So would love to talk more about, with you about that later. Yeah, also, so I'm wondering how, you know, there's some discussions within the, I believe it's within the comprehensive plan for the city of Minneapolis and within the transportation action plan for a south side and a north side greenway. And I know that the north side greenway has had some progress of late, and just, you know, thinking about how the score is calculated and areas that have this acreage disparity, again, looking at upper south and knowing that the south side greenway would cut right through there and connect a bunch of different parks, do you think, do you think that could improve our score? And I'm just, that's something I'd love to bring to the board to share more, you know, about those projects.
Yeah, President Forney, Commissioner Alper, the, so first of all, you know, we have our south service area master plan and north service area master plan, both do support those two greenways. And it's why we've partnered on the north one as it passes through both Willard and Cleveland Parks, along with our construction projects. If those greenways were implemented and included sort of park-like corridors outside of our designated parks, I think they would then, in terms of the TPL score, they could function much like the Greenway long has, which is that it's a trail that's open to the public and provides a park connection. So that could be a way of mitigating it. I think the other side of the coin is that that would probably be a smaller acreage. And it's, when it comes to the score, it's the acreage where we're not, where we're not getting a great score. It's the access that we do much better on, and that those trail corridors are a bit often more about access than acreage, so.
Yep.
But it could, I mean, it could tip the scales.
Yeah, great, great, absolutely. And I thought for a second, I heard you say Dreamway instead of Greenway. I like that. Dreamway. Anyway, I just had to point that out. But I had just one last thing about that feedback to the Trust for Public Land on equity, you know, the other legs of the stool that you mentioned, investment, programming, and maintenance. Can the board write a letter? I know you've had the staff letter. Could we say something as a body to make that suggestion? I just, it's an open question, I pose. Thank you so much.
Well, that's a great segue, because that's what I was going to suggest, not a letter so much, is I was gonna make a plug for Worth as well, and so that you could say, well, yeah, board is really expressing a lot of interest in adding Worth to this. But I would also say, maybe the Fort Snelling land, I don't, I know it's not contiguous, I don't quite know where it falls on here, but it's also near an area that seems to have some gaps. And of course Meadowbrook, I don't think would do any good on the equity score for the non-contiguous, non-city of Minneapolis. But Worth is really compelling because that is such an arbitrary border, really. So, and then the other thing is, I remember reading, but you know, I can see, but I do believe that the water surface areas are also driving the scale or size of the acreage. Or are they, have they been excluded?
They've been excluded.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Vice President Smith.
I just maybe have a point of clarity or just maybe a point of information. So when we talked about, Commissioner Thompson was talking about kind of expansion, we were talking about what maybe will remedy not only a park problem, but kind of a neighborhood development strategy that we as a park board consider an independent community engagement aspect, because neighborhood organizations, speaking as an executive director of one that has been historically white and not engaging for all community members, and it's just homeowners, leaves out a great just homeowners, leaves out a great deal of people. And we talk about removing like housing in such a time where it's sacred, where it just shouldn't be, but to make sure that we do our due diligence, to make sure that that's exactly what the community is asking for, and not just those who have, but those who may be like there by the skin of their teeth, like that we just kind of go the extra mile and not rely on the city or the county to get the true information from community. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Menz?
As someone who has spent most of my career evaluating and worrying about test scores at the end of the year, I think that it doesn't really always reflect what's going on in the system. And I think that, thank you for presenting this, and the park score is a really good reflection of how we are raising the bar for other cities. And I like that, I like that frame of, of what we're doing nationally. What I do have a question about is the bathrooms, and they're not counting times they're open, I'm assuming. They're only counting times in, in buildings. So I do wonder about what Commissioner Thompson said, like how much do we subconsciously think about these metrics when we're, when we're considering options? And do they ever, the other question I have is, do they ever change the amenities? Because I can't imagine that splash pads have been on there forever. But like, how often does that happen?
President Forney, Commissioner Menz, I think the first question was, are they counting restrooms in terms of the hours that they're open? And they don't. We just simply submit how many, essentially, I guess, it's how many buildings with public restrooms do we have in our system? And there happen to be an even 100. But in terms of the facilities that make up the sextet that they are counting into our score, since I've been doing the Trust for Public Land's submittal, which is probably about, Secretary Ringold was doing it before I was, it's probably five or six years now, they have not changed. And I will defer to her if she has any knowledge of previous changes in the facility mix.
They are, they have increased, and I actually thought he was going to tell the story about splash pads.
Oh.
Because that is a good story to explain kind of how we work with TPL on this. They haven't changed since he's been there, but they were, they, they added like four more, right, as he took over the role.
Okay. So, yeah, since, should I tell this?
Well, you do.
President Forney, so President Forney, Commissioners, the splash pad story, we, we used to strictly have like one or two splash pads, which we define here as an aquatic facility that doesn't have permanent standing water, right? That's how we design a splash pad. And so we, one year, asked for clarity on what TPL meant by a splash pad. And they said, oh, anything where water sprays around. And so we kind of said, so like a pool with a jet coming in the side? And they're like, yep. So in one year, we built 16 splash pads. And I think that was the year our score had gone from two, and we went back up to number one.
Superintendent Pandora, please, if you have a story as well, we'd love it.
That was the one I was going to mention, actually, they were going through, so I appreciate that. President Forney and Commissioners, I just wanted to just quickly say, I just wanted to acknowledge Director Arvidson. He's just brilliant in the work that he has done around this, and the time that he spends into this is just incredible. I know, Commissioner Arpil, you mentioned about the amount of time, and he is just outstanding, and I know we've gone back and forth at times, and we've had conversations with TPL, and I won't even get to some of those, but it's been great to have him, and we continue to look at how we can take this information and always lead and not just follow. And so I think he said it well, is that we always believe that folks are, we're lifting other organizations and park systems because of the work that we do, and it's an exciting thing. So we're very privileged and excited about that, and we'll continue to do that. But I just wanted to acknowledge his work and, and how much he has meant in this, putting all this information together and what it means. And so I just wanted to make sure, I just said to Director Arvidson, how much I appreciate him, and thank you for his work and what he does. And I will say this, the amount of emails that I get when we go from one to two to three to five is brutal. It's like, but I wanted you all to know what it really is, because what typically comes out is that the information's about potholes or these kind of things, right? This is, this is, this is not that. This is, we have an incredible park system, and I think with the information that you have, that you can share then with constituents, what the park score is and what it means. And I think that would be very helpful, too. So thank you again, Adam, and thank you for your time. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Alper?
Yeah, thank you. I just, to build off of what Commissioner Menz said, you know, thinking about the hours of the bathrooms and the amount of time that you've spent on this, that our, you know, the body of knowledge that I think the NPRB staff has on how this score is put together, I guess I'd, I'd really love to suggest that we challenge ourselves to think about how, you know, the metric by which we would like to be measured, and think about that in terms of our collective feedback to the Trust for Public Land, and if there's anything we as board members could think about, whether it's thinking about tree cover or, you know, in terms of our goals that we passed this evening, our strategic, not goals, our, yes, strategic directions and performance goals and priority strategies. I just think, I think, I know when you spend an incredible amount of time on a project that you get very close to the, what it takes to put it together, and I, I think there's an opportunity to build on that. Thanks.
Commissioner Menz, for a second time.
Can I, can I clarify really quick on the splash pad thing? So waiting pools are not splash pads? Unless they're like the Wait Park waiting pool, where there's stuff spinning around?
President Forney, Commissioner Menz, a waiting pool, especially like when we think of our old-style waiting pools that were built in the, what, 50s, 60s, that don't have accessible entries and don't have any jets or anything, those are waiting pools, and they don't get counted as splash pads. But as soon as we have some bubblers in them, or one of those rain umbrellas, or near, near my house, a heron that shoots water at you, that's a splash pad, under the TPL metric. We would, I think, still internally make the definition that when we're designing a splash pad, that's specifically to create an aquatic facility that doesn't have permanent standing water in it.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for the wonderful presentation. I just want to, the way I describe it is that TPL has not moved the goalpost. They've widened the goalpost for more and more park systems to be as successful as we have and everything. And so I don't know if this is urban myth, or if this happened like the splash pad and everything, but I remember former President Walensky realized that when we were one with St. Louis, St. Paul, excuse me, and everything that's had, it's because they were counting every hoop, and we were counting every basketball court. And so that's where it did change. So our hoops are definitely multiple, so I mean, they're doing well. And so my suggestion is really to solve all this and everything, is we just go ahead and annex Theater Worth. Go to, you know, Golden Valley and say, hey, we'd like, you know, bring, we may get a part of Minneapolis. So anyway, that's my solution to that problem. Anyway, thank you, thank you very much, everyone. Fine discussion, but we have another wonderful discussion, and this is going to be about climate resiliency initiatives, our fleet, our park fleet. I love it. And I believe we have Fleet Manager Dale Walker. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me, President Forney and Commissioners. See a couple familiar faces and some new faces, so I guess we'll start out with an introduction. I'm your Fleet, your Equipment Services Fleet Manager, Dale Walker. Been with the park board for about four and a half years. I have about 36 years in fleet maintenance and management experience, working in the trucking industry, construction, and railroad industries. So the Equipment Services Department is responsible for managing 1,900 units, or 1,900 units of large and small equipment. I also manage 13 mechanics and two shop attendants who, who also help to maintain that equipment. So today, I'm going to share some, some initiatives that, that the equipment shop has taken on in regards to the climate resilient items. So the first, first item is, first initiative is waste reduction. Second item, clean burn diesel technology, then electric vehicles, and then we'll go into battery-operated small equipment. So one of the, when I started four years ago, all of our fluids were pumped from drums, as you can see in those pictures, which, you know, very wasteful, you know, those drums, a couple of them are recyclable, but most of them ended up in our landfills. One of the undertakings that, from a previous experience, was to, to go to a bulk fill system and eliminate the usage of drums. And basically, with a bulk fill system, all the fluids are brought within, brought to the facilities within a truck or tanker. You can see the black downspouts, they hook a hose onto those spouts and fill the tanks accordingly. So that eliminated the need to have drums anymore. It made it a lot more organized within our shop, and you can see nice drip pans underneath and so on. So that really made a cleaner look in the shop, it gave us more room in regards to being able to stack the containers and to fill the fluids. We can go, on some of the smaller containers, we can go three-high if needed, and we have added a couple since then. So for the most part, I think we're down to just two particular fluids we still have to get in drums, and that's just because they're so thick that they're unable to pump them from a truck or into a truck, and that's a chainsaw bar and chain oil for the most So year, year-round, we're saving about 12 drums a year from going into the, to the landfills or being destroyed or by utilizing the bulk fill systems. And we've, and since we installed these at our south side operation center, we've also expanded and have installed them in all of our operation centers, Parade, North, Maintenance Operation, Northeast, and so on. The next, another undertaking we had taken on was, when I started here, all, most of our shop was using paper towels and boxes, and that box of paper towels nowadays is about nine bucks a box. We were averaging between 16 and 20 boxes a week. So as, as the mechanics were wiping their hands, throwing this in the trash, it was adding to the landfill as well. So recent, about two years ago, I looked into these laundered rags. It's now, instead of costing us, you know, $170 a week for paper towels and contributing to our landfill issues, we are now purchasing laundered rags at roughly $15 a week. They can be laundered and reused, and in some cases, if they get destroyed, it could be recycled and put in like bow and arrow targets and things like that. The next area that I've spent a lot of time and is trying to get our fleet compliant in regards to utilizing clean burn diesel technology. So as you see in this chart, and you may be aware of the days where the buses were blowing black soot, or the large trucks, and so on, there's a lot of particulate matter coming out of those vehicles. The EPA back in 1996 decided to start taking control and, and really stopping some of those pollutants. As you can see, from 1996 to about 2014, the reductions in soot or particulate matter and nitrogen oxides being emitted into the atmosphere has been reduced significantly. So much so, as you can see, you know, nitrogen oxide, you know, parts per million are .04 from the, what was it, 9.2 that originally was? And then soot levels are to, you know, at the .02 parts per million. So there, when, when they first implemented a lot of this in the trucking industry, a lot of the truck drivers, when I, when I was in that, said states like California should be paying the truck drivers, because the air going into the engine, or the, the air coming out of the engine on the trucks was cleaner than the air going into it. So, and I, I don't know if that's true today, but I gotta believe that, you know, it's come a long way, and the air is getting better with those diesel engines. So as you can see in this next chart, the, so by getting to that lowest level in, you know, in 2004, they're calling those units Tier Four compliant, which is the final tier. On the way, other, you know, they, being they went after the trucking industry first, a lot of the other diesel engines weren't really touched, your front-end loaders, your backhoes, your big construction equipment, also your farm tractors. Well, just in the last few years, roughly, you know, 2008, 2011, they really started looking at those and making changes, and now they are needing to be Tier Four compliant as well. As you can see on the chart on the left, with these changes, they're seeing roughly 96% reduction in soot or pollutants going into the atmosphere due to these changes. So when I started in 2018, we had roughly 26 pieces of equipment that were not Tier Four compliant. I've worked, you know, pretty diligently to try to get our diesel equipment to that Tier Four compliance. Unfortunately, a lot of it was relatively new around that 2014 mark, where they were told to meet, told to meet the Tier Four compliance. Pictured is one of, one of five tractors we got this year, that the previous tractors were not Tier Four compliant, and now we are in Tier Four compliance, and the air that we're putting out when we're out sweeping ice rinks, or these tractors are out seeding or aerating, you know, the, the grass and so on in our parks, the air coming out of it is much cleaner than the old one. You're not seeing the soot come out, or the, the black exhaust coming out like a lot of the older diesels. On top of this, I got to update this the other day, from four pieces, three pieces, we also have a new garbage truck, and that's Tier Four diesel compliant. I believe in the next report of officers, you see, you'll, you'll see the new garbage truck in that. There again, if, as it's going down the park trails, empty and trash, we're emitting cleaner air while we're doing it, or cleaner exhaust, I should say. So one of the biggest challenges we've had is trying to get electric vehicles into our fleet. is trying to get electric vehicles into our fleet. First off, it took initiating the electric vehicle infrastructure, a way to be able to charge them. In June of 2021, we implemented or built, worked with Excel Energy to build a six-vehicle charging station at our cell site operations center. We were able to get this funded through a grant through Excel Energy. The only thing we had to do was participate in an electric vehicle feasibility analysis with Swatch Labs. Once we had completed that analysis, they came through, put a new power pole in, new power cabinet, transformers. And then all we had to do was, in regards to our trade shop, the cement shop, poured the cement bases, and our electricians unwired in the charging stations you see in the picture. That electric vehicle feasibility analysis we did, we learned a lot in regards to the current vehicles we had that were actually great options to replace and utilize electric vehicles. Basically, the result of the analysis determined, you know, that of NPRB's 166 vehicles, 35 units returned action items. 16 of the vehicles needed further optimization review, meaning the utilization was really poor on them and made us wonder if we needed them at all. However, after reviewing it closer, a lot of those vehicles were not being used due to COVID, like our rec vans. Our rec centers weren't, you know, were closed during the COVIDs. A lot of our sporting events and leagues and stuff like that were not traveling. So a lot of those vans sat all of 2021. So that data they were using from that time period really affected some of the reporting we got. However, we did find 11 vehicles were a good fit for an electric truck replacement. Three additional vehicles were a great fit, or possible fit, for electric SUV replacement. And then five vehicles were a possible fit for a sedan-type vehicle. This is kind of the spreadsheet of the results that were provided to us by Swatch Labs. They used a number of metrics, and I don't know how their algorithms or their software works, and it's pretty proprietary to them. But as you can see in column four there, or column five, that's where they were making their recommendations. They were looking at things, annual miles traveled, some of the savings that could be had by going to an electric vehicle versus driving a 3/4 ton around the city. So anyways, we took that data, and with that, we actually, one of the vehicles on here was that first van at the top. We actually did replace that with a Mitsubishi Outlander, which was our first plug-in electric hybrid vehicle for our environmental group. You know, it was quite an undertaking. It was about a year in the makes. And since then, COVID's really delayed us being able to order any or get any electric vehicles. The order windows just haven't been open up until recently. But I got great news as of last month that... Where'd it go? Missed the slide, I think. Well, it's coming up, sorry. So another issue we're having is, you know, with the trucks that were available to order, they're just not practical. You got your Tesla, you know, which is the bottom one. It does have some carrying space, but you can't really put a topper on it or anything to secure the tools that we do haul. The Rivian, which is the top picture, it's a smaller truck, smaller footprint, just troublesome to haul a shovel or some things and some tools that we use and supplies. So, and then overall, just the lack of dealer support and parts to be able to support, you know, off-brand until they start getting more established. Back in 2020, while currently NPRB has four hybrid vehicles and two plug-in electric vehicles, one of the hybrid vehicles is a Park Police SUV interceptor. We do have four additional police hybrid vehicles on order. Once again, we're seeing lengthy delays just due to the computer chip shortages, which has really been a challenging. We used to get vehicles in four months. We're now seeing, well, I've got some that are close to a year now that I haven't seen arrive. So it's really, really screws up our budget process as well because the vehicles aren't coming in, getting paid for on time, even though the POs have been issued out and so on. Some of the challenges, you know, as I stated, Ford was to take orders for the EV trucks and the electric pickups in early of 2021. COVID created lengthy delays in getting the supplies to build the trucks, computer chip shortages. You know, and as I spoke of, some of the electric trucks just don't have the capability that we need for hauling or securing tools and supplies. And then ultimately, one thing I've missed in regards to the Teslas and so on, they don't offer a government-level truck. So, you know, we don't want to buy a truck that's got leather seats and sunroof and, you know, digital dashes and everything. We want a government-type vehicle that's being respectable of our taxpayers, of what they're putting into the city and not, you know, using impractical vehicles. One additional need we do need, or is a challenge for us, is we need to grow our EV charging infrastructure throughout our locations. Currently, of those 35 vehicles that they suggested that could go to electric, we only have the capability currently to charge about 14 of them. Two of them outside here, 12 of them at our cell site location with our six-port charging station down there. So if we want our other operations centers to be able to have electric vehicles or utilize electric vehicles, places like Hiawatha, who I know are in the planning process currently, need to have some of that electrical charging station infrastructure put in place, along with some of our current operations centers as well. So here's my good news. As of April 1st, we were finally able to get some electric vehicles on order. We do have four Lightning Pro Electric government-type trucks and one electric transit van on order. Now, we may not see them for a year, but at least we're heading in the right direction. And I'm happy to get these, you know, on the streets here and start contributing to reducing our carbon footprint. Switching over to battery-operated small equipment, we have two main vendors that we partnered with in regards to battery-operated equipment. They offer what we call commercial battery-operated equipment. They actually offer parts and supplies, or parts to be able to repair the machines versus having a throwaway battery-operated type. You know, any of us can go to Menards and buy the, I don't know, $50 battery-operated tool that's on the shelf. But when you go to get service, when it breaks down three, four years, you may have some troubles or some lengthy time in getting parts for it. So when we go to buy these battery-operated tools, and it's nice that we have one of the major players that's actually headquartered here in Minnesota, they provide a lot of these tools for us to test up front. And I should say our second partner does as well, which really, when we put them out to our staff to try them, you know, it's before we jump, you know, headfirst into the water, you know, it gave us a great opportunity to really get a feel for them, reach out, check the parts networks and so on to be able to keep these machines working. Because if you don't have a tool that's working, it's work that's not getting done. So in 2020, we were able, through grants from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and mainly that Volkswagen lawsuit and settlement, the MPCA got a lot of, or some funds to help really drive some green initiatives through the state of Minnesota. Several, a couple of our groups took advantage and went out and bought, after testing with our partners, went out and bought a lot of these battery-operated chainsaws through those grants, or battery-operated tools through those grants. The forestry department started off with buying 15, or purchasing 15 battery-operated chainsaws. They use the saws for pruning trees in the fall and for small deliming projects. I actually was talking to one of the foremen the other day, and they actually were looking at the gas one sitting there, and they said, "When are you going to send those to auction? Because they don't use them anymore. They love the electric so much." So just not as noisy, not having to pull-start them, can just click and go, delimb a tree while they're in their buckets and so on. Equipment Services purchased 12 commercial-grade operated push mowers back in 2020. So we kind of jumped on the bandwagon. Once again, heavy metal, your standard push mower. But yet, we can get parts for it and keep them serviced and keep them operational. They're not a throwaway-type mower and contributing to our landfills or metal recycling. Gardening Division really took charge. There again, they bought, they basically outfitted all their gardeners or gardening locations with battery-operated weed whips, leaf blowers, chainsaws, hedgers, you name it. The Golf Division also jumped in. One of our local vendors came out with a battery-powered greens mower. And they had initially, about four years prior, another manufacturer came out with one. The Park Board put one into play. It would mow four greens and then die. So they were not impressed with it at all. These new mowers through our local vendor can cut 20-plus greens and on a single charge, and some even more depending on, you know, how the course is laid out and how hard it has to work. And lastly, the Parade Ice Arena had purchased two electric Zambonis. We'll continue to invest in battery-operated commercial tools as current gas-operated or gas-powered tools wear out or the life cycle ends. Today, we have approximately 115 pieces of the battery-operated equipment. They do come with their challenges, though. Commercial battery-operated tools can be heavy and cause extreme fatigue when operated for a lengthy period of time for a person of smaller stature. Some larger maintenance areas require carrying multiple batteries. Operation Recreation Center locations require charging infrastructure to be able to store and charge the batteries when not in use. Battery life can be shortened if a battery is mistreated, dropped, you name it. Batteries can be lost, misplaced, or stolen. Replacement costs can be hefty on some of the larger batteries. Current other equipment you may see in your travels, currently have 11 electric carts throughout the system. Mainly, once again, our gardeners were our big adopters early on in some more of our high-profile parks and our operations rec centers. The lower right is a picture of the three electric greens mowers that we currently have at the golf courses that they like. And then coming out in later 2022 that we're looking into is one of the manufacturers is offering the first electric zero-turn mower. So with that, I guess, just a few items that, you know, we've trekked into and areas we've explored in regards to, you know, green initiatives. Any questions?
Dale, this is awesome. Thank you so much for all that. And I see some lights are going on. Okay, Commissioner, music.
Thank you, President Forni. Mr. Walker, I just, I want to commend you for how much work above and beyond what the board has directed that you have done. I know, I recognize some of the things that we, as a body, have asked staff to do in your presentation, but almost everything in there was not things that we directly asked for. And so I just, I wanted to commend you for going above and beyond and making so many things happen that are having a positive impact on reducing our carbon footprint. It's just incredibly impressive. So thank you for that. I do have a question. Are we doing analysis to determine what the life of the electric equipment we're replacing the gas-powered equipment with is comparatively? So we can understand.
We are tracking maintenance costs and repairs and abuse, I guess, in some cases. So yes, we are. Unfortunately, we're only, you know, roughly two years into it, so we don't have a lot of data built up. I can say, within the two years, the equipment we have is working exceptional. We are seeing a couple batteries fail prematurely. However, you know, unfortunately, in the case, we don't know how they're handled every day. So, because they're out in the field. So they show up to us, say they've got a bad battery. You know, was it dropped? Was it, you know, was it not getting charged properly and so on? So there's a learning curve, and we try to take the time and share that with our parkkeepers on how to, you know, keep the batteries properly maintained and protected. But unfortunately, I don't know how they're handled every day. So it's hard to know, you know, what caused that battery to fail. So we have submitted, we did have one fail prior to warranty expiring, so we were able to get a new one under warranty. But otherwise, so far, we're two years in and we're seeing great results.
Okay, well, that's great, great to hear. And I'm glad to hear that we're also collecting data. I know that's important when we're trying to figure out how to budget in future years. So thank you for making that happen as well.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, President Forni. I'm really grateful for this presentation. I learned a lot. And I know something that folks have talked to me about with the battery-powered small equipment, if I got that right, is the leaf blower. So I'm excited to hear that there are some in our system now, battery-powered. But I also wanted to just share a comment and ask how we're thinking about this piece of it with large equipment. I know electric vehicles definitely part of our climate resiliency work. I'm excited to see all that's being done there. And I also have a note of caution, just because I know that, especially with trucks and, or electric vehicles, I should say, are heavier than standard gas-powered vehicles. They also use, like, rare earth minerals to be created. And so I would just say, and at the same time, large equipment, especially with trucks, they have additional blind spots, they can have poor sightlines because of the car hoods have gotten taller. And I just pulled up an article here. It says, "The Hidden Danger of Big Trucks: That Pickup Trucks Are Getting Larger and Becoming a Hazard to Pedestrians and Drivers of Smaller Vehicles." And so I would just say that we have some competing priorities here with CO2 emission reductions and also yet maintaining safety. And I think I saw on your list of new vehicles, I know that pickup trucks are part of the fleet. And so just to, I would urge staff and the board to think about that in terms of our goals when we acquire new trucks in particular.
Curious how many of your 115 pieces of equipment were grant-funded versus budget-funded?
That's a good question.
Or a guesstimate?
I would say, with the 15 chainsaws, and I'm trying to think, gardeners offhand, we had three sets. If I had to guess, it was roughly 45 pieces that were, 45 to 50 pieces that were grant-funded.
Funded. And are we participating? I know that some city council members are trying to incentivize electric use with private lawn care providers within the city. Is there any opportunity for MPRB to participate or get involved in that program?
I, I guess I'm not aware of.
Okay, okay.
At this time.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Finish?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Denny.
Thank you for the presentation. I also found it very informative and interesting. And actually, the part that really stuck with me particularly was the, how you're using, working with the local manufacturer or the local company to test things. That's, that's driving innovation. And I think as a public, you know, public agencies like this, that's a great role to fill. So maybe what you said, Commissioner Schaefer, maybe it's not a direct relation for other landscape companies or others in the city, we're supporting their future ability to adopt these sorts of tools. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Seeing no other lights. Thank you for this presentation. Really, I, I agree with Commissioner Musick that it's something we've put a nugget out there, but wow, you just really went for it. And I, I think we're all realizing that electric is so important. And I think to piggyback on what you were saying, Commissioner Schaefer, any way that we can collaborate with the city, with the county, whatever, I mean, I was just chatting beforehand, I have a hundred percent electric and I'm planning a trip and I'm realizing, okay, where are charging stations? You know, if we can be a real lead in that, I think that would be really such an advantage for, well, for all of us. And, but, and I also appreciate your comment about Rivian, or excuse me, about a lot of these other companies are doing government-level trucks and everything. Our son happens to work for Rivian and I will pass on that nugget to him. So scale it down, dudes. Anyway, I, I appreciate the, the presentation. And unless there's any other questions, we will go on to another very enlightening discussion with Director Swenson about board.
Thank you.
Board discussion on the repair of the Lake Harriet Bandstand, Bandshell, excuse me, it's to me, it's stand. Anyway, and Concessions Building. Hurrah. I can't wait to see this.
We'll transition from battery-powered, electric-powered vehicles to repairing, repairing buildings. Okay, let's see. So we're, so we just wanted to first just talk about just the restoration of both the pavilion and, and the bandshell. We, we called it, tonight you'll hear the, the pavilion actually be called the Concessions Building, et cetera. So there's a couple of different names that you'll see tonight. I just wanted to introduce Ann, Ann Bodas here with Ben Thompson Rito and, and put together a team, structural engineer, mechanical engineer, mechanical electrical engineer, and, and a roofing specialist. They're working on this team and they completed the initial assessment to the bandshell and the pavilion in July of 2021. And then they went on to do some additional, what we call destructive testing, actually taking parts of the roof apart, just seeing how they were made, et cetera, checking them out. That, that was finished in November and December of this year. And then we finished the final report. I also want to say that there are a couple of the park board staff that have been helping us. Jeff Evenson's here with asset management. There's other asset management staff that have been involved, helping us kind of get into the buildings, giving us their review of, of the facilities, et cetera. We have a vendor, Bread and Pickle, and we met with them as part of this review as well. So they gave information about how the pavilion itself was functioning, et cetera, and what, what things needed to be changed. And then in planning, we had Francesca Pass. She helped us put together, she's helping us with community engagement and she put together some of these historic photos, which came from our archivist. And we're really happy that Angela Salisbury could provide some of this. So you're going to see some photos that really haven't been in digital until tonight. We had to take those pictures, take pictures of them and then bring them into Photoshop and kind of correct them. So that'll be interesting. And then in communications, Ben Johnson has been helping us. One of the reasons we're coming to you tonight is, right, there aren't really any decision points that we're asking you to make, but we want your feedback because then we want to make those next steps. And we're coming into the bandshell season, shall we say? And we want to make sure we get the signage up and we let the public know kind of what our next, next steps are. So I'm going to go through a little bit of history here. It's kind of fun. So Lake Harriet, the park as we kind of know it, well, not as we know it now, but the north side really started in 1883. And of course, that's when the Minneapolis Park System was founded as well. So it's been a park, a park that's been used for a long time. Beginning in 1892, first of the four pavilions or bandshells were, were built. So we've had a long history of having pavilions and bandshells at the lake. And the current bandshell that you see now was built in 1986. And I show this slide here, this is of what we call the women's restroom. It still exists today. It was built in 1893. And through Spiff the Biff, in, in 1998, 1999, there were community members that, you know, redid this restroom. It's functioning, it's ADA accessible, et cetera. And they also redid the exterior of the men's restroom across the street. And this building was instrumental, really in the work of the designer of the bandshell and pavilion, because they use this, this was used as some of the design inspiration for what, what you see out there today. The first pavilion, constructed in 1892, was done in conjunction. We, even back then, we were doing partnerships, right? So this was in conjunction with the, with the streetcar line, that company. And it was a destination in 1892. The city was not out this far, so this was a great, a great place for people to get out of the city, enjoy the lake and, and music, et cetera. Pagoda-style, designed by a park commissioner. So I just wanted to point that out, that maybe some of you want to design some, some pavilions you can go, you can have at it, Commissioner Harry Jones. And it served the, the park visitors for 10 years and then was destroyed by fire in 1903. Second pavilion, which is pictured here, was also designed by Harry Jones. It, it actually extended out over in the lake. And so it's a pretty interesting design. This is on, I think this photo was taken from the west side of the lake, looking to the north. And so in, in, in really 1900s, you could, you could eat outside over the lake and you could get that lake, lake experience. Unfortunately, in 1925, there was a tornado, a strong storm, and blew apart. And it's reported that two people died in that storm. And so in 1925, that pavilion was demoed. Right away in 1926, under Theater, Superintendent Theater Worth tutelage, they put together this, really a temporary facility, built to serve band, you know, the park, park system. And of course, it lasted for 60 years. Built in 1926 for $4,000. If only we could do that today. And it lasted for 60, 60 years. So now we come up to 1986, when the, the bandshell that we know today was constructed. Designed by Milo Thompson, one of the founding partners of Ben Thompson Rito. And, and Ann can answer some questions about her conversations with Milo recently, if you have some. It was constructed at a cost of $5.5 million in, in 1986. And of course, if you escalate it, just using a simple escalation, cost of, cost, cost of living escalation, it's about $14 million in today's dollar, in today's, today's money. And I mentioned earlier where the inspiration came for some of this design, for the, for the appearance that you, that you see of the bandshell and of the pavilion. And of course, it has become an iconic building for us in the park system and represents so much for us and what's great about the system, right? We think about being outside, listening to music, et cetera, from this, from, at this facility. The Concessions Building Refectory was built in 1989. Again, very iconic, just a few images, right? All of you know it, I'm sure incredibly well. And these are things that well-used, well-loved, and something that we need to maintain. We understand it. Superintendent Bangora, making sure that as staff, we understood the importance of getting this thing repaired and showing the public, you know, the care that we have for this type of facility. Okay, so we come now, right, 30, 35, 30, 36, 33, 36 years later, right? We, we need some help. And so that's when we asked, you know, Ben Thompson Rito and Ann to come in to help us kind of look at this. And so we looked at some basic, you know, components of the building. I always like to say, if we have a good hat on, right, we have a good building. Well, that's the first place that they really started, looking at the roofing systems, condition and material. We looked at material options, cladding or the siding, a complete structural review, again, looking at the mechanical and electrical systems and making sure that the, the building, you know, looking at eight, from an ADA standpoint, how are, how do we access restrooms, et cetera? And then of their other deficiencies. So when we summarize it, right, we look at the roofing and cladding. And some of these photos, like you go, oh, this is awful, right? And what have we done? Well, again, you're at the end of the lifespan of these shingles, right? We've, we got, you know, darn near 35 years. If you get 35 years off your asphalt shingles in your house, you'd be grateful, right? So we, we more than got our, our, well, I don't know if money is out, money out of it is really the term, but we've, you know, we probably should have replaced these a few years earlier, but we haven't. The good news is that, yes, we need to remove and replace those shingles, we need to redo the roof system. But we didn't find any structural damage, right, based on, you know, these missing shingles, right? You've got steep roof, you've got a good, and here, for those of you who understand or care to understand, there's some really steep valleys here. And usually that's where we see roof rotting, roof material rotting, et cetera. And we're pretty confident that there was some good, good material used underneath the roof that keeps, keeps that area from rotting out. Because we, we, again, the structural engineer was up in these, uh, uh, rafter, yeah, looking at all the rafters and, and the open trusses. And we were up there too, just looking around and, and they're in pretty, pretty good shape. We're really, we're hopeful for that. So yes, we need to replace, we need to get a new hat, but we haven't lost that structure. Electrical systems are in really good shape. If you, again, talking to Bread and Pickle, there weren't any major changes, you know, upgrading electrical panels, things like that, even from our, you know, our, our staff that work and, and do concerts. There's not a need for more electrical service. Maybe distribution, right, in a bandshell of that electrical, having more plug-ins, et cetera. But no real need to upgrade or put in whole, brand-new lighting systems. So there are electrical systems. So they're really, that's really good. The bones, right, of these two facilities are really strong and, and we, they're, they'll receive an upgrade very well. ADA, of course, back in 1989, restroom standards are not what they are today. So those restrooms that are in the pavilion and the refectory, they do not meet current ADA standards. Interestingly enough, though, right, if we just do a re-roof, it doesn't trigger those ADA requirements. So those are things that we need to consider here as we start to think about costs and phasing the project. And then just other things that were looked at, right? We've got a, you know, one of the things about the design is that it opens up to the lake, right? So there's these great glass windows, see-through, looking out over at the lake from the back of the bandshell. And of course, there's no bird safety treatment or anything on those windows. So those are things we need to look at. And then just basic door frames and things like that, that we'll, we'll want to address in, in this renovation. Okay, so we know there's a need. And so what, what do we all think is exciting here? What, and what do we, what do we want to do here? So what we're proposing here, even though we looked at multiple materials for those roofing systems, is to really go back to remove the wood shingle and replace the wood shingle. But with that replacement, and we can explain it if you'd like to ask some questions about it, the detailing is different nowadays, right? So our roof, our roofing inspect, our roofing expert inspect really looked at, maybe they used the wrong nails on those shingles. Again, there was no breathing detail on the backside of those shingles in 1986 and 1989 that is specified today. So we can, we can, we can put together, we can put wood shingles, we can build back better, those wood, wood shingles, which is really important, right? It's not the same detail. And then as we saw in, in some of those eaves, right, there would be some metal roofing that would go up in those, on the eaves and in the valley. So we can start to really protect, protect or create a good hat. Again, we estimate 30- to 40-year lifespan on those wood shingles, which, which would require maintenance every three to five years, checking for split shingles, replacement, things like that, et cetera. So those are things that's not without maintenance at all. And, and that's something that asset management, they're committed to doing, right? We get a new system here. They have to rent a lift to get up to some of those higher roofs, but those are things that, that, that we can do, right? It's not impossible. The other, the other reason, there are two other things that really went into play about wood shingles. One is just that if we think about where the building will be after another 30 or 40 years, right, where it's going to be at that 60, 60-plus year. And, and maybe at that point, right, there's some other further design changes that need to happen on that building. So we weren't going to spend extra amount of money to put in a roofing system that maybe would give us 75 to 90 years, but get a good roof system that will get us 30 to 40 years. And then at the, at the end of that life, maybe there's some other things that are going to happen to that building. Plus, I think, really from a design, from a design sense, when we switch to another material, metal roofing, it changes that, what we call, what we'll call shingle style. And it's going to change that appearance significantly. And so working with Ann and her team, just this idea that wanting to maintain that iconic look, something that's really important and things like that. Upgrade existing restrooms. And then what we're proposing to solve kind of a restroom need, just like we did at Bede Makaska Pavilion, is that we would put in a new all-season restroom, a separate all-season restroom facility. Okay, so now we get into what does it cost, right? So, you know, working with Ann and her team, we just put together some preliminary estimates. These estimates would include all soft costs. And so you look at what the bandshell roof would cost to replace, again, with wood shingles. And then thinking about the cladding or the siding of the bandshell. In this case, the, the third item is just combining the roof and the cladding at the same time for a dollar value. If we want to just refurbish those restrooms, i.e. put in new venting, painting, new fixtures, et cetera, we've thrown in an estimate for that. And then that new all-season restroom building is the bottom-line item. So again, to, to go with what we're recommending for a full replacement, we have a total of 7.3 million. Now, what we're, what we're going to propose here next is just to phase this work, right? So phasing for us works really well for a couple of reasons. One is gives us a chance to keep our, our funding coming, right? Because it's hard for us to think about all of that money at one time. But two, we really want to keep the bandshell open as long as we can, right, during, and not close it during construction, same with, same with the vendor. So we want to think about phasing that work over, you know, you know, non-peak park use, right? want to think about phasing that work over, you know, non-peak park use, right? So if you think about Bread and Pickle closing down maybe in October, so we'd have construction from, let's say, October till the end of May, right? So those are that construction season that we're thinking of. Just today, Anne reaching out to the roofing specialists that inspect, just this idea of delay in certain materials. Wood shingles aren't a problem, but some of the other materials that are needed. So there are some longer lead times that may affect some of that, but again, what our commitment is to try to do the basic construction during off-peak times. And again, as I said earlier, that these are 2022 numbers, and they include all project soft costs. Okay, so how could we phase this? What would be a good phasing plan? So our idea is really to come in and really do the benchelle and the refectory roofs at the same time. There's some economies of scale, we think we'll get a better price. And we are putting hats on these facilities that will really help to, really help to preserve them. The phase two, then, would just be looking at cladding or siding of both the facilities and updating that, or doing some updates to the restroom. And then we're proposing in phase three, looking at that all-season restroom building. Again, this phasing really focuses on trying to get the roof for the benchelle and the refectory replaced first. And again, one other component of phasing is that if we are able to do any fundraising, that we can show progress in phase one, that we are committed, as a park board, committed to these buildings. And then we're looking for help in some of these other phases. So funding. So where do we get this from, right? So tonight, again, this is a discussion item, so there's no action that we're asking the board to take. That will be done at a later time. But if we look at where some of those fundings, funding could come from. So we look at our operations and maintenance funding. We have some operations and maintenance dollars had not yet been allocated. At the end of this session, there's talk of some additional operations and maintenance money. We don't know exactly what that is, but that could be something that would be allocated to this facility. And then we have some O&amp;M money that's already going to certain initiatives within the regional park. So it'd be a reallocation. Again, whatever we would do, right, we're going to bring that back to the board. All of you would have, you would know specifically which projects we would be taking from, which ones we would have to reduce, or which ones we would have to delay. Again, if we think about total funding of a project, then we would have to look at really reducing or delaying some of our regional capital dollars, right? Again, Lake Harriet is part of the, within the Chain of Lakes Regional Park, so it qualifies for regional park dollars. But when you think about reducing or delaying regional park projects, it's not just Chain of Lakes projects, it would be regional park projects throughout the whole regional park system. And then there would be some enterprise funds that would come to this project. Pavilion is an enterprise operation, so there are some capital dollars from the enterprise that would be sent here. And then again, we're showing here just this idea of a capital fundraising campaign. And we think we have some items that would be great for fundraising, and we're hoping at least. And again, any action that we take on what funding gets moved around, or what gets allocated, would happen to, would come before the board. So timeline. So what we're trying to do today is get some feedback here from you. If we're getting the general, like, yes, we like your approach, we would move right into finishing construction documents. Again, all of our projects have to be publicly bid, and there's a timeline that's associated with it. It's not just, it's not just Anne and her team's work, but then it's the work that we have to do on the public side, advertising and receiving bids, et cetera. You know, we would hope that if it would all work out well, if, again, if it does, that we would have a contract before you sometime in October, again, and we'd be able to start construction, October, November, depending on availability of materials, and hopefully wrapping up that first phase in June of 2023. Now, I have this timeline here, and it may be, we may be pushing those dates just a little bit. Again, it has to do with what we have availability for products, lead times, et cetera. So, okay, so I just want to summarize. Again, what we're talking about tonight is just this idea of removing or replacing those wood shingles and replacing it, but doing it with higher quality, higher-quality details. We think that will help those wood shingles last longer, looking at renovating, updating the bathrooms, but to really to solve that overall restroom, lack of restrooms, although we'll only get one count for, that's not our goal, Commissioner Thompson, would be a seasonal restroom, right, that, excuse me, would be an all-season restroom that could provide restroom facilities. And all of you who have walked around Harriet, you know, when it's 10 below, know what it's like sitting in a porta potty. So it's a good way for us to do that. So we'll take questions. I have Anne here. If there's detailed questions, Anne is our expert. I just want to say too, that she, Anne may make a comment or two about Milo's comments about the work that we're doing here tonight, and hopefully this summer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Swenson. This was wonderful. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you so much, President Forney. I just wanted to, I actually don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for that awesome recap of the history of the benchelle at Lake Harriet, and then also say I completely support this timeline. I think many in our city would do the same, just to get this taken care of. So thank you for being so mindful about that.
Commissioner Menz?
I also really like the history lesson. That's one of my favorite parts about these meetings, is learning so much about the history. The bathroom, do we have other all-season bathrooms? Maybe I missed that? Like, how many other all-season bathrooms do we have in the park district? I guess I'm on the, I drink a lot of these, so I have to go to the bathroom every once in a while. You might see me step out sometimes, so.
President Forney, Commissioner Menz, I would have to come back to you with that. And I can't tell you how many all-season, right, because we've got a lot of rec centers and things like that. But at Harriet, the restrooms that are in the pavilion are closed during winter, right? So they're not all-season right now. And even at Bade Makaska, before the pavilion burned, those restrooms were closed during the wintertime as well. The new restrooms going in at Bade Makaska will be in all-season. They'll be open year-round. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
And they would be in a separate, they would be like a separate building?
Right. So if Francesca's listening tonight, she will really be happy that she gave me this aerial. So, right, our idea was to, there were a couple of different locations where it could go, but it would be a separate building, on the edge of where people are accessing and visiting now. We don't have the exact location. That would have to be determined and come back to you. But yes, it would be in this general area, not attached to the two buildings. It would be a separate, isolated facility.
Thank you. Yes, I would like that information. That would be terrific.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I'm not sure who can answer this question or who wants to speak, but I would like to take some moments before we move ahead to reflect on how we got to this point. I feel like it's really important for us as a board, before we move forward, to understand where were the gaps? Did we do all of the maintenance that was detailed in 1986 when this was built? I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but I don't think it's acceptable for an organization of our stature to have an asset that's so premier for our system to be in the state that it is. And so I want to better understand, as a commissioner, where we fell short, and how we can help you and support you in this process going forward. Because obviously, I support this, but I'd like to have somebody kind of speak on, as you as a staff reflect on the last 33, 34 years, where did we fall short, and where were the gaps?
President Forney, Commissioner Schaefer, I don't know if I can adequately kind of answer that question, but I'll just say a couple of things. And, you know, we were actually quite surprised, right, how, even though it may look terrible, there were a number of things that were done correctly in that construction that has kept us from having further damage, right? Literally, being in that rafter space in that open area above the spaces that you would kind of know, yep, it's 33 years old, but it's not damaged, it's not rotting, it's not falling in. I think there's some things we've learned about that roofing system that we didn't know back then, that we're going to apply today. And we think about reasibility of the backside of those shingles. And then even just the fasteners that were used. Inspect believes that maybe the wrong fasteners were specified, right? Or we didn't understand what zinc-coated would do versus galvanized. So I think those are some things that we did right. I think the difficulty is, these are difficult structures to maintain, access, et cetera. So I think if there's anything that's led us to maybe a downfall, is that they're beautiful. These are forms that will live on for many, many years, but they don't lend itself to being able to put your, you know, 26-foot extension ladder up, walk up, and check out, and maintain. So there's going to need an extra level of maintenance. The good news is that, just as you, so the other good news, I will just say, is that you think about the work that Dale just talked about, right? Those are things that, you know, 10 years ago, we weren't even thinking of doing. The idea of having staff that really thought proactively about, you know, how to upgrade a fleet, and to think about, really, what to do with your fluids so that we don't put 14 drums back in the landfill? I mean, you know, having worked construction and been around many, many job sites, there's so much waste that goes in there. So to have a staff that does that. The other thing, and so I'll just say that Jeff Evanson and his group, you know, they look at these buildings a lot differently. I'm not saying that previous staff did not do a good job, but I think we understand now the work that needs to be done. It's not something that we can put blinders on and just walk through the next 30 years. I don't know if that's answered your question. I can try to get back to you with some other information that I would have, but I understand. And we're going to, we're going to, there's some good things that we've done, and there's some things that we should have done differently.
It sounds like maintenance, obviously, a plan for the maintenance may have been part of the issue, and the accessibility of that maintenance. If you could address the budgetary concerns around that as well, I mean, I noticed in the budget you presented us today, there was not any maintenance dollars included in that assessment. And I don't want us to end up in the same situation where we didn't plan ahead.
President Forney, Commissioner Schaefer, right, I don't have a specific dollar amount for you right now. As we bring forward these, this, you know, true funding, right, we will bring that at the same time to show you, yes, here's the construction costs, but here's what we think the maintenance is going to be every five years on these, or every three to five years on these facilities. So we don't have it right now. We have an idea, right? But we have Inspect helping us with that, some other contractors thinking about what type of maintenance that would be required. But we would bring that forward when we bring our funding decisions to you, or request for funding decisions to you.
Thank you. That's really helpful. The other piece that I would like to talk about is, is there a way that we can use this process to highlight to the state and to met council the differences in funding that we are experiencing and the needs that we have? Because it is currently playing into the Cedar Isles master planning process. As we look, or even think about other structures, there's been a great amount of pushback in whatever kind of structure there is. And there's lots of reasons for that, right? But I'm saying, this is having an effect across the system, that people are not trusting us as a park board to take care of our regional parks. And that's not completely our fault, right? When you talk about maintenance, I understand, that's related to budget, that's related to dollars. So what I want to find out is if we can capitalize on this somehow, and that's why I'm a little reticent about the phasing idea, to be honest, is this is not just our problem. This is a regional problem. It's a regionally loved park, right? And so we need to be smart. We're playing smart here now, and we need to play ball with the big boys, and say, we want a team effort here. And I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if there's any other ideas that we can come up with, but bits and pieces, it feels like we're going to take away from the rest of the system and other projects that are in the pipeline. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennet?
Thank you. Those were some great comments, Commissioner Schaefer. One thing I will say about the ongoing ownership and maintenance of this roof going forward, we just, in our strategic direction, did advance and elevate some more asset management categories to be added. I would guess something like, these roofing systems could easily fit in, and I heard that Jeff Everson has been looking at this. So this is, we're poised, we'll be poised to inherit a new roof with good maintenance practices going forward. And, but I totally take your point about all of it, and the regional aspects as well, and support anything that we can do to make that point more boldly. So I also want to say, just to clarify, because I was aware from, since this is in my district, that, just to clarify for my colleagues, that there will be like, construction-style signs posted that are graphics saying, hey, you know, work is coming, which is going to be, I think, really important, because it's going to get really busy down there. And then also, I just wanted to thank you for that, and thank you for the website that you put out for information on the benchelle. That was really helpful. And then I think just finally, I think there was, you know, I know that there was some look at other alternative materials, but maybe pivoting back to the wood shingles is probably something that I would support, because I think you're looking at maybe the middle of the lifecycle of the whole building, and that might be the right, the right material for what you think might be left. And just for new buildings, you know, any new buildings we're doing, I think that, especially if we want to be super energy efficient, we really have to invest in the most efficient envelope. Those carry high first costs. I'd also say we'd look at durable materials for things associated with that outside envelope typically. But I think this is a little bit different, because this is, this is a rehabilitation, not something new. And it certainly doesn't have, and this doesn't have an energy use in that same way. So those were my comments. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Musick?
Thank you, President Forney. Commissioner Bennet stole my thunder on the lifecycle of the building. I was going to comment on that around the wood shingles, so thank you for that. I agree with you there. The one thing I do want to talk about is the potential to add a all-season restroom in this location. I'm a big fan of being able to go to the bathroom in parks all year round, not outside, and not in a porta potty. So I'm glad to hear we're thinking about that need in the system. But I do, I do want us to think about the equity of where we have those in the system right now. I mean, I am buffeted in the wintertime from people asking for not porta potties at the regional parks in my district as well. So I would hope that before we decide to spend a million dollars in a really, really wealthy part of town, that we understand, system-wide, where we may have greater need for that at this time. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Well, you guys took me down memory road. I think I'm the only one who was around when this thing was put together. Oh, excuse me, I take it back, probably, Counselor Rice. Anyway, yes, back in 1986, I was the co-chair of the fundraising for the Lake Harriet benchstand. Now, I say that very qualified to all of you, because for some dumb reason, I never understood it and everything like that, all we did fundraising for was for the sound system and the benches. But we got credit for doing the whole, excuse me, thing. Anyway, I'm not sure where all the funding came from, but somehow there was some sort of hush-hush about it. So it's imperative that we do have some sort of philanthropic effort on this. And, you know, what that looks like, I have no idea. But I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Schaefer that we're getting a pretty bad reputation. At the same time, I'm trying to remember when we repainted it. How many years ago was that? Was it 10, 15 years ago? Oh, the historian speaks. Go for it, Counselor Rice. Oh, the historian speaks, go for it, Council Rice.
Two points. I guess I'm dating both of us, Commissioner Forney. The, in 86, the dead, actually, the, back in 1986, we, the park board had three commissioners on the Hennepin County Park Reserve District, and four were elected, three were appointed. Minneapolis contributed to that system, but never got any money for it. And so if memory serves, the suburban system gave us $3.5 million for the construction of this building under the auspices that it was a loan that's never been repaid. But the argument from our three commissioners, and you knew Patty Baker quite well, was there, the lead member said the city had contributed millions and millions and had no investment in the city. So that was the foundational money for the bandshell. And then I do recall, I didn't see this in the history, Superintendent Gerben, the bandshell had deteriorated significantly within about 20 years, and there was a local effort that was made to raise money to fix it and paint it. I believe the gentleman's name was McGovern, whose name might have appeared in the paper, and there was an effort to raise money for it. And I actually think Superintendent Gerben exercised his unique authority to pick out the color of the facility. I think this, it's now blue, isn't it? Isn't that the color now?
It's beige, it was blue.
It was blue. I seen Superintendent Gerben decided it should go back to a different color, so. But yeah, that's a little color history.
So do we know when that was, the painting?
I thought it was about 2007 or '08, wasn't it?
2009, is that what that says here?
We think about 2009, Brian, it could be.
That's about right, yeah.
About 2009, I.
It was a controversial decision at the time.
Yeah.
And the facility had worn down, and as somebody who had a shake roof one time, I don't know whether they're a good thing or a bad thing, but when I had to take mine off, it was quite a mess.
So in 13 years, am I getting my math right? Okay, is how long it's been deteriorating. And I mean, very frankly, I don't remember that last year it was showing its wear that much and everything. Anyway, that's aside the point. It's worn, we need to deal with it. Anyway, your approach, the phasing, I agree with. I think, you know, if we can, you know, all agree on where we access these funds, you know, without impeding, you know, other areas of the city. So that, to me, I think is important. I'm assuming you're not going to winterize the women's bathroom, the historic women's bathroom, okay? I had to bring that up. Anyway, but I think the philanthropic park is something very important. And I think, you know, community is constantly being asked, but at the same time, I think we all realize this is so iconic. Couple of thoughts I had. Is there any possibility of building in some sort of, I don't know, a ladder or something like that?
Roof access, you mean?
Yeah, access, exactly.
That you could, but it wouldn't help with the overall roof replacement. It's such a steep slope that they really have to access it with JLG, like a crane or something like that, or else build scaffolding to do the work up there.
Well, not necessarily to do the work, but to do occasional inspection. Because I think that is, you know, truly, you know, one of the issues is that, you know, I mean, I guess drones could be looking at it too, but whatever, that's just, whatever. That's your detail, I don't need to be dealing with it. But I think how we frame this is very important, you know, because the community is looking to us to be responsible. And whether or not we build into the budget, an endowment for it, a maintenance budget, something to that effect, I think, is essential, you know, for us to be aware of. I love the idea of the shingle style staying that way. I did have the opportunity to work with Milo, and so I appreciate, you know, keeping that aesthetic is important. And who knows, I'm not going to be around for the next fundraiser 40 years from now, what somebody's going to want. Is there any other things that?
Commissioner, President Forney, if I may. I don't know if you recently spoke to Milo, if there's, do you mind if you did, if there's any comments that he had about? Do you mind if we make that comment?
Oh, no, please, sure.
Well, we did, of course, call Milo. He's still very active and opinionated. And we talked about the various options for the roof cladding that we were considering in addition to the wood shingles. And he was actually surprisingly okay with the metal idea, except he said, "But what will it sound like when it rains?" He was worried about the acoustics of the building, which was, is really an integral part of this design is the orchestra performance in that shell. And then he also was concerned about the consistency of the color from the roof to the walls, because that's an important part of the shingle style, is that it's an integrated form. The roof and the walls are compatible and continuous almost. So when we talk about doing this in phases, that is an issue with controlling the color, you know, because the new shingles are going to be a new color, and the old shingles, if they're left on the walls for a future phase, will be, there'll be a disparity for a while. And I did also want to mention that we won't be recommending going back with any kind of paint. It would be a stain or a breathable product, not a paint. Because that is a very complex maintenance issue that happened here. It's not to say that, to blame the painting, but it didn't help the longevity of the shingles to paint them.
Did the project in 2009 affect the durability of the building?
It's a possibility, because that paint product doesn't breathe.
Good to know, thank you. No, and I couldn't agree with you more, I love that. And if Milo has a choice of color of stain and everything, I want to acknowledge him and everything. So come back with us with some sort of action plan and anything like, I say, to me, I think, you know, how we message all of this is very important. And the community's looking to us to get it done. So I appreciate this effort. So, thank you, thank you, Ann, for being here. And I will then move on to petitions and communication. And I'm going to start with Commissioner Bennet.
Yes, thank you, President Forney. I actually have a couple of things. I attended the Armitage Annual Meeting last night, which was great. I enjoyed being at Armitage Park. It was jam-packed with activities and full of life and fun. And I noticed that all of the diamonds were occupied, actually. Also, we didn't talk about that at all tonight, but a shout-out to forestry. I can only imagine what they went through last week with the storms. I just saw some damage in quite a few trees, street trees down in my area. And then they were magically gone. But also, I would like to give a special mention to Dave Bergstrom. I heard from someone that I know at the Minnesota Streetcar Museum just how much they appreciate Dave and all that he does for them. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Elker.
Pass.
Commissioner Menz.
Thanks, President Forney. I have a couple of things today. First thing is, like what Commissioner Bennet said, the opening of the Minneapolis Park League Baseball and Softball Season started, which is just, if you go to parks and there's lots of activity going on, it's really nice to see those community events happening in a really authentic way. And really just, I know we approved this as a consent item, but the twins, $100,000, I mean, that's a lot of money. I mean, and I think that if we are good as board stewards and as a recreation department, they may be willing to help us more. That if we can create innovative programming, those partnerships can expand, and that philanthropic dollar can go up and its impact on young people can go up. So I think that we should make sure to acknowledge those gifts as a board from this level. $100,000 is a good amount of money. And they do that, I think, almost every year, annually, for equipment and uniform costs. The Little League is going to be at Lake Hiawatha this, no, May 28th. So just kind of, it's going to be a nice cleanup with some groups that are doing stuff on the north side. And then with Sean, who has, who brought us our 10,000 pounds of trash today, that we're going to go up to 10,001 at least. I'd also really like to highlight and thank Chief O'Hara. We had a conversation this week about safety in and around the park that is really close to a school, the school that I work at in northeast Minneapolis. And I just, I want to really commend him and his staff and the officers on their innovativeness in handling the problem in a very efficient and effective way at this point. And that's really important for our constituents and to get those, and to really prioritize young lives and, you know, youth safety. And with the strike and with different, this is another consequence of things happening and adjusting, and I really appreciate us being able to do that. That when you add 42 minutes to the school day, suddenly, that's a shift change for us, and there's an issue with like, how students and what the safety level is. So when those things came into play, there was a response. And I think that that's something that's really positive about the staff that we have and the officers that we have as park police. I'd like to shout out Commissioner Schaefer for her play ball, her baseball reference. And I think that we should all have those on the board a little bit, you know, everybody needs a little bit of. And finally, I went to the Northeast Park Neighbor Association meeting, and people are really motivated. And one of the things that I found is part of the activity planet at that park is a larger, regional-sized skateboard skatepark. And we've also responded by putting in a pop-up skatepark at Pidema Casca, which some of you may have been emailed about over and over and over again. But I think that it's really important for us to acknowledge communities that might not have had as much land access and how we move forward on those things. So thanks for letting me speak for a few minutes, even it's a long meeting.
Commissioner Musich.
Thanks, President Forney. I would like to thank all of my constituents that have been so patient as we wait for the water to evaporate from last week's crazy, crazy intense two-inch rainfall and 45-minute storm. I know it's frustrating to have pedestrians on bike trails because the pedestrian trails are flooded. I know it's frustrating for the golfers that the course has fairways that are inundated with water. There's not a whole lot we can do to stop rain events like this. So I'm thankful that my colleagues understand that climate change is an issue that we need to start responding to through adaptation, that they're supportive of working on finding ways to fund all of the projects that we've got planned but have yet to find money to implement. So that's all I got, thanks.
Commissioner Olson.
Oh yeah, just real quick, I, yesterday I was playing basketball at Painter's Park, and I saw the sign for what looks to be a cool event. It's a three-on-three justice basketball tournament can be held at Sebastian Community Center on June 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There are a lot of different age groups, but it's all going to benefit victims of gun violence. So if you have basketball players in your life, maybe we should get a three-on-three, you know? Who else? Alicia, you in? But it seems like a really cool event, and so just want to let folks know about that.
Commissioner Schaefer. Thank you to Street Reach and Chief O'Hara and Park Police for really making a difference in some of our District 4 parks and making them accessible and feeling, making everyone feel comfortable there. So thank you for your efforts in that. Thank you to everyone who showed up for the Elliott Park cleanup. There was a pickup truck full of trash by the time we were all done. That was exciting to see. And thank you to Maintenance for removing the warming house at Lake of the Isles today. This was something I got many questions about, and I know people are, don't understand this, you know, it's due to road restrictions in the spring. And so with the spring being delayed, it was hard to wait. But thank you for your work with that. And finally, get out to the Eloise Butler Wildflower Garden. Now's the time to go see the spring wildflowers. So, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Forney. I just have a couple of things too, and I echo what almost everyone said. There are just a lot of cool things going on in the city. On, I'm losing track of my days. Monday, I was at North Commons for community engagement, and I just have so much thanks to Director Arvidson and Director Swenson for all the work they've put into this, but also Superintendent Bangora, and I know Council Rice, and probably as a lobbyist more on this. Being the Parks Commissioner of that district, that includes such a huge, huge project, I have gotten a crash course in different funding sources, which Commissioner Schaefer speaks toward, and you learn and recognize how we get things done. And so even hearing from Coach Pop, I think he said, tonight, it just, it's really impactful to get to be there and be in that space and feel the energy around this gigantic project. So if anyone hasn't been to North Commons, just let me know and I'll take you over there. And the other thing I wanted to say is that last Tuesday before the insane storm, I went to meet with some, Harry Davis and some other golfers over at Hiawatha. And lovely, lovely guys that I got to chat with for a bit. And they did say to me that, I'm the only commissioner that's ever come and talked to them. So I'm just giving, extending the invitation to others. Harry's a really, really nice guy, and he's, they run a whole, they golf every Tuesday, and I have, I don't want to misquote the decades, but it's many decades that they've all been over there golfing together. It was just a nice conversation. And then just, yeah, I'm just going to throw out a shout-out to the Twins, because, you know, because for Billy, sorry, Commissioner Menz. Baseball reference is always good. That's it.
Vice President, Smith.
I'd just like to reiterate the event that Commissioner Olson spoke about. It's a really big deal. It's on Juneteenth. We also have our Juneteenth that we do over at Philly Sweetly that the Minneapolis Park and Rec does in partnership with community. That is also happening. But just to highlight the, as the summer kind of beckons upon us, even though young people will still be in school, just giving them a positive outlet as the days get longer. And then last Friday, there was a basketball, like, tournament event at Painter's Park. It was like 160 people, which was really cool. Just young people, young adults, just kind of hanging out, having a good time. They like filmed and did some cool things. And I don't think it was like, organized by the park, but the possibilities of these sorts of things happening in our parks with no issues in terms of physical safety to anyone and community feeling an actual connection. I got a lot of phone calls about that, like, hey, when is the park doing another one of those things? And I'm just like, oh, that wasn't a park event, that was a community event. And I got invited, and so I just, you know, popped up. And so I think the more community reaches out to us in terms of an organization, finding creative ways to make sure that we are accommodating and partnering with community and trusting community to keep community safe versus turning community down is a really big deal, and that will be really imperative for the success and the safety of our communities this summer. So I'd like to see more of those type of events, you know, go on. So, that's it.
Thank you. Well, it was a pleasure this week to be at a media event, I guess is the way we call it and everything. I think most of you know that the city, through the American Rescue Funds and everything, we will be receiving $1 million for tree planting. That's a really awesome, it's a really awesome thing, but I think it's so affirming, because everything I'm hearing from this particular board and everything is how much of a priority climate resiliency is to all of us. So I'm thrilled that this is happening. Particularly, as we all know, spring has definitely sprung or summer is, you know, in full-fledged. I mean, as we indicated, the Wildflower Garden is open, Garlic mustard pole is happening at Eloise Butler, and the dandelion A's at the Art Godfrey, and anyway. And I got my first row in. I think that's a real celebration. But it was my last row. We have high water, okay? It's very critical, what's going on, okay? Is this climate change? I have no idea. But I went over to look at Halls Island. Halls Island, particularly, half of it is flooded. The Heron Rookery, they are both flooded, both of those islands. It's really... It's, it's really devastating. But I also want to make a shout out to our forestry crews, to all of our maintenance people for, as far as I know, we didn't have any major outages at all. It, it was huge. And, you know, you guys rise to the occasion, I cannot imagine. But I'm, I'm so thoroughly concerned about this high water, although I did go over to MWMO and we are not at the 100-year flood level. But I hope all of these rains, which I think we might be having another one and everything, is not going to be affecting Hiawatha and that we might have a decision by default. On that note, happy note and everything like that, I'd like to express that on Saturday, Commissioner Musich is having her birthday. So happy birthday. And on that, on that, I will declare the meeting adjourned here and on to, are we on to operations? We are to Operations and Environment.
Okay, the time being 8:50. I'm going to call the Operations and Environment Committee to order. Secretary Ringold, can you please take the role?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Alper.
Here.
Commissioner Abeni.
Here.
Co-Chair Thompson.
Olson.
Here.
One of those sons.
Co-Chair Olson, my apology.
No problem.
Co-Chair Musich.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And I don't remember if we had minutes. We don't. This evening, we have a study report item. We are joined by Assistant Superintendent Schroeder to bring us up to speed on the Lake Nacomus area groundwater and surface water elevation. This would be the Nacomus groundwater study that some people may or may not have received emails from my constituents about. It's been going on for a number of years. It's been very informative, I think, for all the agencies that have been involved in it. And yeah, take it away, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Musich and Commissioners. Deb Pilger and Rachel Crabbe will probably be joining me if there are questions on this. We had hoped to have somebody from the Minnea Creek Watershed District be present tonight, but unfortunately, they couldn't make it. So I'm going to stand in and do probably my, the best James Whisker I can. So, so this is, this is really their presentation and I'll be referring to notes, which I don't usually do, but I think this is important because there's a lot of content and actually Commissioner Mens disappeared and there's actually a lot of history in here as well, which is
He'll be right back.
Even, even longer history than perhaps the band show. So this is the, the summary of this, of this study that's been going on for a couple of years and that resulted in essentially what we have been calling a white paper for a couple of years, which is a more than 100-page document. And this is the summary of that. It resulted from several areas of concerns that were raised around the Lake Nacomus area. People reporting wet basements, wet backyards, and impacts to their sanitary sewer systems. It was, it was resulting from a period when we had the wettest record, wettest period on record. This project was the result of a number of different agencies, including the City of Minneapolis Public Works Department, Minnea Creek Watershed District, Hennepin County, the DNR, and importantly, the USGS, who had been, we had had a lot of questions from people trying to draw the USGS into this and they have, they did participate in this process. So the team worked to aggregate all these different theories that were raised over the years about what was causing the high water around, around the lake and the neighborhood surrounding the lake. And it was important that they, that we tried to aggregate those into a series of categories, seven different categories, with information pulled together from more than 70 data sets and studies from across the area, including the introduction of seven new groundwater monitoring wells that were installed during the course of the study, which, which was really important in this understanding, the groundwater interactions here. The, the team analyzed the findings against those potential causal factors and three things really stood out. The geology of the area, basically how the area was formed, how and when the area developed, and this is significant because it was significantly changed in a, in a period that was pre-environmental regulation. And importantly, in relative to the last several years, record-breaking precipitation, which is projected to continue. I'm going to start with geology and hydrology. This is the first part of the history. 11,000 years ago, glaciers came across this area and shaped the basic landforms that we have. The, the, they carved deposits that left extensive peats in the area that it's important for two reasons. The peats at the time forms in areas that are permanently saturated and the presence of the peat indicates a much larger water footprint than what exists right now. There's a better diagram coming up. The peats act like a soil sponge, absorbing up to 10 times their weight in water, which can create issues when we have a lot of rain. So this is the first government land survey of the area that documented over 1,500 acres of lakes and wetlands in the area. This was done in 1885. And if I move through this, you can begin to see Mud Lake, which is now Region, Legion Lake today and Diamond Lake, the areas along the creek, which were largely wetlands, Mother Lake and the footprint of Amelia Lake, which is now Lake Nacomus. And the result of this, that those, that those blue areas occupied 1,500 acres in 1853 and there's been a loss of about 60% of that footprint since then. Also important, land use and relative to the Park Board, Theodore Worth had a, a pretty significant role in shaping land use in this area. The picture on the left is from 1915 showing Lake Amelia or Lake Nacomus now. It was a very shallow wetland, only about four feet deep. Worth put in place a plan that would reduce its area from about 300 acres to 200 acres, creating 100 acres of new land for parks and catalyze in development in this part of the city. And so the picture on the right shows what happened with Lake Amelia after the so-called, at the time, swamp was filled in. It was made possible by dredging the lake deeper, taking the peaty dredge soils from Nacomus. You can see a worse dredge in the image on the right and filling 100 acres of lake to the west and southwest, moving those soils. And to give it some sense of scale, the project took four years and moved over two and a half million cubic yards, an amount that would fill what used to be the Metrodome. The dredging created the new parkland and supported housing around Lake Nacomus and was worth reported on the work that took 11 years, finishing in about 1925. He said, "The transformation of that 400-acre tract formerly shallow water surrounded by a peat bog and swampland, which had prevented earlier development to a clear-water lake and attractive, useful park, had its desired effect on the growth of the city in that direction." Basically, Worth encouraged the development of a city on spoils from the wetland dredging. Interestingly, when you look at what was going on here, you can see in the circled areas, that's around 15th Avenue between 56th Street and 58th Street, you can see areas of standing water that resulted in the, in the filling before those, those neighborhoods were developed. Of course, the standing water is not there in those locations today except in rain events. And this is where we get to the next part of the history. We look at historic patterns of rainfall and if we look at when it was, when this area was developed between the 1920s and 30s, it was the driest period on record and it was in fact the time during the Dust Bowl. It also relates to what's going on with peat today, although it's, this area's never been dry. The, what happened, the air experienced almost immediate issues from the filling and relocation of material. Worth also commented in his memoirs, "The dredge fills on swampland may take years to settle to a final elevation if it in fact ever does settle." And they kind of foreshadow what's going on. The federal Public Works, the Works Progress Administration came in and did significant work in restoring the area, replacing curbing and sidewalks and then filling other depressions to the south and west with the peat that was hauled in from Mother Lake. It also, they all, the work was also done at the same time apart due to safety issues. The picture on the left is from the Minneapolis Star Journal, which highlighted a death that happened from the peat deposits that were there during road construction. So precipitation and climate change is the next thing that was looked at. I mentioned already that when we looked at the area around the 1920s and 1950s, it was the driest period on record. Then we come to the 1910s and it's actually the wettest decade ever recorded. The metro area receiving eight years of rain in seven years and relative to what we consider normal, it added an additional three feet of additional water in that time period or additional eight feet from when, from when, before it was developed. So when we kind of aggregate the historic geology that shaped area soils, how the area was developed and layering record-breaking precipitation into the areas of concern, we see a few interesting things relative to groundwater. When we look at the creek and the lake and the well data relative to the estimated basement elevations for areas western Nacomus, we can see that Minnea Creek sat below, this is the elevations of the creek, sat below the control point for Nacomus more than 95% of the time when issues were experienced and that basement elevations were anywhere from five to 19 feet below, above the shallow groundwater. There's the shallow, there's the shallow groundwater. And this begins to demonstrate, I'll come back in a minute. I gotta get one more page. So when we look at the areas western Nacomus, the area of highest issues, we see the basements can't be interacting with shallow groundwater. It's too far down into the ground. What is happening is the record rain is entering the ground and encountering the peat soils, which were placed from the excavation of Nacomus and, and other areas, preventing it from draining and creating a perched groundwater system, essentially creating a bathtub under homes. As, as the study moves forward then, they look at recommendations, looking first at local steps that can be taken as well as those the county, the watershed, or the DNR could take at a regional level related to climate action. And we're going to focus on the local actions, looking at what, what might be done. And it begins with things like ensuring positive drainage away from places of residence and ensuring functional downspouts, discharging from homes at least 10 feet away, installing a sump pump and given the age of sanitary sewers, actively replacing and not waiting for the issues to happen. There are a number of things that we could look at with the University, for instance, the University of Minnesota, beginning to conduct more soil orings to investigate the precise locations of peat and perched groundwater and looking at ways that we can, sorry, as I look at this, and to begin assisting homeowners by providing them resources to understand essentially what the recommendations are in the upper right picture here. And that brings me back to the, the more in-depth discussion that will be happening in the Nacomus Town Hall, which is happening on May 31st at the Nacomus Community Center from 7:00 to 8:30, where Commissioner Kosky will call the, the meeting to order. The Watershed District staff and the multi-agency team will be there to present and ask, answer questions in more detail. And I will stop there and see if there are questions. I know that was a very quick and high-level review of a, of a study that's 100, 100, 100 and some pages and took a more than, more than two years to complete. And depending on the question, I may be calling out others to help me answer.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Schroeder, for walking us through that high-level overview of the detailed report that is available online, should anyone want to spend their time reading it. Co-Chair Olson, you have questions.
Yeah, well, thanks. And mostly just, just comments, this is really fascinating and I actually appreciate the brevity. And just, I was just, it's just stunning to take that, and it's so important that we take this high level and we see just how inextricably linked, you know, our city is to these kind of past decisions that maybe, you know, seemed like an absolutely good idea of developing and draining and all this stuff and now we're dealing with the consequences and, you know, knowing how valuable peat land is and, you know, just getting rid of it and considering swamp, it's just really fascinating and how, you know, we have, you know, just, it's just kind of an existential thought, I guess, and how we need to kind of reassess our, our relationship with, with nature, even if it is, it resulted in the city that we know and love. So, I don't know, thanks for, it's very, it was very fascinating and got me thinking. So, thanks.
Commissioner Abeni.
Yes, I just wanted to express my appreciation for the presentation and also for the content that's available. The report was very well done. It's very readable if anyone is, people are interested in. I think some of the graphics, particularly that cross-section is, is very informative. The other thing is the, the team that put this together went so far as to have the report kind of evaluated by, you know, University of Minnesota professors in groundwater. And that's also very interesting to read. I think this is on our webs, on the city's website as well. So, you know, I just, I really appreciate this approach and I think this, you know, this town hall will be interesting. I'll certainly be there and thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. President Forney.
Thank you. Commissioner Musich, I'm sorry, I missed some of the beginning and I'm trying to remember, why was this study done? I guess is the best way to say it.
There, President, Chairman Musich and President Forney, as, as we were going through issues originally around Lake Hiawatha, these issues kept coming up consistently, that the issues at Hiawatha were caused by the creek, that the issues at Hiawatha were caused by rampant upstream development, any number of issues that were highlighted or hypothesized, the, the airport, development in Richfield, blocked pipes going into Mother and Taff Lakes. There were just a huge range of, of conjectures about what was going on and being brought forward by people in the community who had suffered wet basements, wet backyards, or veiled sanitary sewer laterals. And, and as we continued to get into it, it became clear that an agency needed to step forward to try to understand what was really going on. There were great concerns and the Watershed District took the lead on this, bringing together this agency team many times over the period of two years to begin to understand both the research they were doing and the conclusions that they, that we would eventually reach in this. So it came about as a result of homeowners in the area with the concerns that they were experiencing locally in, in, in South, South Minneapolis. I think what, what probably is, is important here is that as we go through this, the, the conditions that they face relative to some of those issues may not be unique to just South Minneapolis. They're likely going on in other parts of Minneapolis as well.
That's exactly why I brought it up, considering we've got another item that's coming forward and that is regarding the Morningside catastrophe. And, I mean, I have many stories and everything that I was raised with, but that somebody who lived at 44th and about, whatever, Pass France and everything, used to row from his house to the east side of Bede MacAsca. So it's all over the place. I mean, my house doesn't have a basement and everybody around me has sump pumps. So it is chronic. And my hope is that we can deal with this, whether it's through the watershed, watersheds, okay, or whatever, but, you know, the city also needs to be, and I'm so glad that, you know, Councilmember Kosky is a part of this, to realize that this is not an isolated issue. It is a chronic thing. I mean, I, we, what, our entrance signs to the city and everything is that we're the city of lakes. No, we're the city on a lake. And we just have to come to that reality. So, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you for those comments, President Forney. Not seeing any other lights, I'd like, I'd like to just say a couple of things about this. One of the big takeaways for me from the report was that it's not anything that the Watershed District is doing at Gray's Bay or anything that the Park Board is doing at Nacomus that is causing the groundwater intrusion that people are seeing in, at their homes or the sinkholes that people are seeing in their yards. Instead, it's climate change. It's that we're getting eight years' worth of water in seven years. It's that we're, it's that we, we chose in the past to develop housing infrastructure on areas that had been playing a really integral role in our city's natural water systems. So as, as we move forward as an institution and as a city, I think it's incredibly important for us to be thinking about how we continue to adapt to our changing climate, how we help support our city. for us to be thinking about how we continue to adapt to our changing climate, how we help support our city and the residents and businesses that are going to be feeling the impacts of climate change. President Forney brought up Councilmember Koski's work around this issue. She's been tremendously helpful in helping people to comprehend just what this report means for them, what impacts it has, and how the city can start thinking about more innovative ways to help homeowners and businesses adapt to what's impacting, what is probably one of the largest investments they've made in their lives, their homes and businesses. So, it's been great to work with her on this. I look forward to more years of collaboration around water in the city. Councilmember Johnson and Paul Masano also have expressed interest in being part of that conversation and helping to move forward resilient infrastructure and programs that help people. So, it's, it's kind of a hopeful, a hopeful spin on a not-great situation. And I don't see any additional lights, so I'll wrap my comments there and declare the Operations and Environment Committee adjourned.
Well, then, I guess I can say at 9:11 PM, I would like to call the order the Committee of Administration and Finance. Can Secretary Ringgold please call the roll?
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Menz?
Here.
Co-Chair Schaefer?
Here.
Co-Chair Thompson?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Excellent. Does someone want to approve our agenda, or do I have any?
Still moved.
Still moved, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. We have to approve the minutes, too. Can I get someone to move that?
Still moved.
Excellent.
No minutes.
Oh, there are no minutes.
No minutes, yeah.
I, that's incorrected. Okay, let's just get into the meat of this, shall we? Resolution 2022-194, resolution approving a lease agreement with Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority for Market Square prior to full conveyance as a Minneapolis neighborhood park. Any comments or questions on that discussion?
I cannot vote on this issue, as it's a conflict of interest. It is my neighborhood, so there is no financial gain. Just will be removing myself from this one.
Thank you so much for the heads-up on that, Vice President Smith. Seeing no lights, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? An abstention?
Yep. I abstain.
Thank you.
I voted aye.
Oh, I recuse.
You voted aye.
Excuse me.
Forgive me.
I recuse myself.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Vice President Smith. That passes. Resolution 2022-196, would someone like to read that or move that for me?
I will. Resolution authorizing a cooperative agreement between the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, the City of Edina, and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board regarding pollutant mitigation resulting from the City of Edina's implementation of the Morningside Flood Risk Mitigation Project, and authorizing the MPRB to allocate $15,000 to a cooperative feasibility study to investigate additional pollutant mitigation alternatives.
Thank you. I believe we have, do we have a presentation on this? This is fascinating to me, so even if we didn't have one, I would request one.
Chair Thompson and Commissioners, again, if there are questions that I can't answer, I'll be turning to my colleagues in Environmental Management who are still here waiting. So this is related to a project in Edina, and I'll kind of go through the highlights of it, and particularly its impacts on Badee McCoska, that were discovered as we went through it. So essentially, the city has, the City of Edina initiated a project that would mitigate flood in a portion of the Morningside neighborhood. What's important, from kind of a contextual perspective, is the water from this neighborhood eventually reaches Badee McCoska by flowing through a series of city Minneapolis pipes, through stormwater ponds at the southwest side of Badee McCoska, and then entering the lake. And what's important here for us is that we own that pond, and that we take responsibility for water quality entering the Badee McCoska. What we found as we went through the study, which has been going on, I think, for some two years, we were introduced to it in October, I believe, the Morningside project will cause pollutant loading in lakes in Badee McCoska on the order of eight pounds of total phosphorus and 1,900 pounds of total suspended solids. The Morningside project has been permitted by the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. There are no other permits required, and so we're in this weird position where we can't say no to a project, because there's no permits required of us, there's no permits required of the City of Minneapolis, and the permitting authority of the watershed district didn't extend to the downstream, the potential downstream pollutants. This, eventually, through a series of clever phone calls, the City of Edina committed itself to increasing, to eliminate the increased pollutant load, and we're still in the process of defining exactly how we do it. But we believe the City of Edina is behind this effort. This is the diagram, essentially, what's happening. If you look in the big red circle, that's the Weber Park area and the expanded, and new pond, the new and expanded ponds, in an area, interestingly, that was sold to the City of Edina in St. Louis Park several years ago by the City of Minneapolis, and that was kind of instrumental in allowing this flood mitigation project to exist. The water flows through, comes to the north and east, and you can see it entering into the Badee McCoska stormwater ponds, kind of in the upper right-hand portion, eventually finding its way into the lake. So, some of the details, the project relies on taking the water levels in those ponds that are existing, or the newly created ponds, and dropping the water elevation down to provide a storage volume for rain events, storm events. And to do that, they will be pumping water from those ponds through both regular pumping every day, through predictive pumping, anticipating a storm event, or during and after a storm event. The result of that is that the water, that the additional water that's pumped through moves the water through our ponds faster, resulting in a decreased residency time, as noted here, reducing the number, the amount of time the water's in the pond from 17 days to 14 days, and that's what causes the pollutant loading. So here, we have more volume, shorter residency time, and then we have essentially this quick diagram that the watershed district assembled to talk about how particulates is settling. If we have less time for those particulates to settle, more of those particulates will actually float out into the lake. So, the watershed district, the City of Edina, and the park board would participate in a cooperative agreement, the subject of this resolution, aimed at eliminating the additional pollutant load to Badee McCoska. The work could be performed by Bar Engineering, who's the City of Edina's consultant on this project. We would be involved, along with the watershed district staff, in reviewing progress along the way, and determining the most appropriate path towards pollutant reduction. There's actually two options that would be looked at. Option one would resolve that additional pollutant loading by treating it somehow within the bounds of the City of Edina, and at that point, they would be looking at, trying to find a way to eliminate that eight pounds of phosphorus and 1,900 pounds of total suspended solids. Option two, which I think we might be more interested in, would find a solution that would eliminate at least that much, and potentially significantly more. And that becomes important, because we have very few opportunities for stormwater, or for pollution mitigation around Badee McCoska, even though it has some of the highest water quality in our system as a result of work that was done through the Clean Water Partnership. We may find a way through this, just early engineering estimates, of eliminating not just eight pounds, but potentially 40, or 50, or 60 pounds of phosphorus loading into Badee McCoska. And that becomes significant, because the eight pounds is equal to, if I remember correctly, about 1% of the total phosphorus loading, and to find ways to get it up to 3%, or 4%, or 5%, or 6% is a significant increase for us, when we have few other options around that lake. So from our perspective, this becomes rather opportunistic. So we would contribute technical and background information, as well as staff time, working toward the feasibility study. We would coordinate around scheduling and financing, share information, and in particular, explore the funding potential for a collaborative project. The $15,000 would go towards the initial study. We don't know what the eventual result would be, and we'd be returning to you to determine that. So the resolution authorizes the cooperative agreement. It addresses pollutant mitigation to at least that no, that neutral perspective, and allocates funding for a design that removes more pollutants than created by the Morningside project, potentially. And I'll stop there with, for questions.
How about, let's go with Co-Chair Schaefer.
Sure. Can you talk a little bit more about the Minnehaha Creek watershed permit? And you mentioned that it doesn't extend to downstream water bodies. Not really understanding why Minnehaha Creek would not care about further downstream.
Chair Thompson and Co-Chair Schaefer, I think they do care about contributions to downstream water quality, but there's nothing in the existing, as I understand it, there's nothing in the law that actually allows them to deny a project based on downstream pollutant loading. There's just this, it's this potentially odd gap that exists. They looked at the ways that they could do this, that they could deny the permit, realizing that they could not. We worked closely with them to try to figure out if there were other things we could do. Rachel, or Rachel, you know more than?
I could just add a little bit of clarification, that the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District absolutely cares about downstream water bodies, but in this case, there's a gap in permitting, where the project is meeting their stormwater regulation, because they're treating all of the water from hard surfaces, and the additional pollutant loading is from water from a different source, through some intricacies in the way that this pond will be pumped down. And that's where the gap comes in. The watershed does have the ability to regulate when there are some unusual events, and that's where the watershed has decided to add a condition to the permit, that Edina will work towards removing this eight pounds, and that's where, how we got to where we are now.
Can you also mention, or talk about, the 10-year timeframe that I saw? 10 years seems like a lot of, long time to figure out how to get the eight pounds down. Can you describe a little bit more about that?
I don't recall the 10-year timeframe. I would need to look at that.
Chair Thompson and Co-Chair Schaefer, the 10 years was, if I recall correctly, and I'll look through my documents here.
Yeah, I'll try to find it, too.
It was on page two of the agreement, and it said, "If practice does not sustain removal of eight pounds per year of total phosphorus at the point of discharge into Badee McCoska during the first 10 years, Edina will take feasible steps to achieve that performance." So it's talking about measuring the performance of whatever system is implemented over 10 years to ensure that what's designed is actually working.
So it wasn't 10 years to get to that number?
Correct. It's 10 years of monitoring, to make sure that we are achieving the eight pounds of phosphorus removal.
I'll keep looking and see if I can find what I read. Mine was not on page two, but I'll keep looking for that. And then my last question was, what are your suggestions for how to deal with this permitting process? Obviously, all of the metro's water gets funneled to the City of Minneapolis in our watershed and our park system, right? And we, as leaders, we are not all water engineers, like Commissioner Bennet, and we really want to figure this out together. And so between the watershed and the city and the park board, how can we really protect what, the resources that we've been given? And I think our partners want to work with us, right, as we've, as we've seen Edina move a little bit. So how can we facilitate and plan for situations like this in the future?
Chair Thompson, Co-Chair Schaefer, I think Rachel kind of hit on it. It's a gap in the permitting authority of the watershed districts that needs to be recognized. And perhaps it's something that needs to be reconciled through some legislative action that grants a slightly different authority to the watershed districts as they go through permitting. I will tell you that this is, this was not the only way that we could have achieved this. I communicated with Council Rice and his staff about other options we would have if this didn't work, and we would have had rights under the Minnesota Environmental Rights Act that would have allowed us to take some action. It's complicated, and I don't know whether this would actually be tested, and it would probably be better for us to seek, to work with the watershed, just to kind of fill that gap that Rachel was identifying.
Thank you. I'll look and see if I can find what I was looking for, but move on.
Commissioner Menz? Oops, I'm not on the mic. Commissioner Menz?
So I'm looking at the budget, and it looks like it's $55,000, but we're only authorizing $15,000. Is there a reason why, is the City of Edina, maybe I'm mistaken and not understanding how it's being funded, but we're funding the feasibility study, and other partners are funding different?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Menz, the initial part of this is to look at the feasibility study. The feasibility study has a price tag of just over $60,000. We are funding 25% of that, or about 25%, $15,000. The City of Edina's funding another essentially quarter of it, and the last half or so is paid for by the watershed district.
Thank you. I yield the rest of my time to the water engineer.
But, in fairness, Commissioner Musich was on first, so I'm gonna, neither of you are.
Oh, she was. Okay, good. Well, then I'm going next. Thank you for recognizing me. I'm not on this committee, but I do have lots of questions. Is the gap in permitting that allowed the City of Edina to decide to pollute our lakes more, one that the watershed district is looking at supporting legislative changes to address?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Musich, we haven't gotten into that discussion yet. I think, I think it's something we should get into, because I can't imagine that this would be the last similar project. The City of Edina is touting this as being innovative, and there are lots of places across metropolitan area that will be facing the same situation, and potentially the same resolution of the problem. So I think it's worth us working with the watershed district to see, because we are at the lowest end of this watershed, of several watersheds, that this is not going to be complicating for us in the future.
Okay, wonderful. It'd be great if we could loop in the other watershed districts that have authority over Minneapolis into that effort, if and when it does move forward. I would, I would very much like to see that move forward. That a wealthy suburb can undertake an effort like this without being required to address the impacts to the downstream communities is just a little bit infuriating, to be quite I had asked if the City of Minneapolis would be passing a concurrent resolution, similar to the one that's being considered by this committee this evening, and I was told that they will not be. So what guarantee do we have that they'll uphold their portion of the agreement that is being proposed to be adopted by this board?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Musich, what guarantee do we have that the City of Minneapolis will uphold its portion?
Yeah.
We've been moving through this process kind of step by step with the City of Minneapolis Public Works Department, surface waters and sewers, and it was only at the very last minute that they decided that they were not going to participate. We were frustrated by that as well, and I don't know that we have any guarantees that they will support their end of it. We looked at this as an opportunity to, because we are, we have to take on the responsibility of stewards of the lakes of Minneapolis, and so we stepped in fully and decided that this was an important thing for us, in particular, as I was mentioning, because we have so few other opportunities at Badee McCoska for enhancing water quality.
Would it be helpful if I and other Commissioners were to reach out to the chairs of the Public Works Committee at the City Council to ask them to adopt a resolution that supports this work?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Musich, I'm going to try and separate kind of the political maneuvering that the board might try to do from the technical obligation that the, that staff will have in making certain we can do this. To have the City of Minneapolis fully behind this would be better. I think that's, at this point, a political determination and not a staff determination.
Okay. I will, I will get to work on that, then. Thank you for the assignment, that you didn't give to me, but that I fully accept of my own accord. And then, can you help me understand the rationale for us paying for any of this study at all? I mean, it feels to me like... I mean, it feels to me like Edina is causing this situation. They should be responsible for it. Is the reason that we're paying anything at all because we're trying to have it look at a more expansive reduction of pollutants and sediments?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Musich, that's exactly the case. We really will be advocating for a more significant opportunity for pollutant reduction that goes beyond the loading that the Edina project, this immediate Edina project, is contributing to Bade Makaska.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for that clarification. And I would just note to my colleagues that if you look at maps of the elevations and the soil types underneath Hennepin County, it is much like what we have here in Minneapolis. So the flooding issues that we're experiencing are going to be experienced by many of our upstream neighbors. So it's important for us to ensure that the regulatory bodies that help make sure that the water coming to us is clean has the support they need to be able to regulate that kind of thing. So, thank you.
Commissioner Benet.
A lot of people have made some really, a lot of non-water engineers have made some excellent comments up here. But I just wanted to just make a couple of comments. And one is that somehow in the park board's process, it seems as though it was flagged to Deb Pilger and team to review this, and that's, I saw the memo that was submitted. So I think maybe this was an in-house identification of this potential impact to the lake. So that's fantastic. Thank you so much. Also, in that memo, I did notice the comment about a rare opportunity to maybe do a water quality improvement above and beyond just the mitigation of this change, this change in the watershed that's happening. So I hope we do find that. And actually, Commissioner Musich, oh, and also, thank you for letting me speak, I'm not on this committee, also talked about the city of Minneapolis. And I do hope that there is an opportunity during Phase Two or whatever, if we can encourage them now, to come back to the table because maybe some of the mitigations or any kind of, I don't know, larger-scale BMP may involve some of their right-of-way or something, some infrastructure that's not ours, which would be great. So I'm grateful for the watershed's participation in this and their leadership as well, and I think they're really seeming to, in good faith, they're trying to convene the right parties to think about this. I'm a little uncomfortable with a pumping regimen, not from a pollution point of view, but from a flood management point of view, especially, you know, if it becomes more important for more pumping to occur there, that could further degrade what we're experiencing down in our basin. So I hope those types of flood, you know, flood management or water management systems aren't too common upstream of us, you know, pumping and things like that. More natural systems would be better. So that's, those are kind of the comments. I'm grateful for staff really engaging with this, though, and making sure that we're overseeing this, our interest in this situation. So thank you.
Co-Chair Schaefer?
Yes, I found the reference that I was looking for. It has a number two at the bottom of the page, but there was lots of number twos. It's in page 45 of the board packet around this item. But it says, "Edina and MCWD will agree to a reasonable performance measurement and reporting regime. If the practice does not sustain a removal of eight pounds per year of total phosphorus at the point of discharge into Bade Makaska during the first 10 years, Edina will take feasible steps to achieve that performance." To me, that sounds like there's wiggle room. If they don't get there in the first 10 years, they will take feasible steps to achieve that performance. So I'm trying to understand, you know, year one, once we give, you know, once we give money and we figure out, okay, this is the plan, you know, is it going to take five years for them to implement that plan because they've got a 10-year window? Or is that, you know, a benefit to us, so we have time to fundraise if we come up with a great big program? I'm just trying to understand why that parameter was put in because that does affect the quality of our lake.
We're all trying to figure out who should respond to what pieces. I actually think it's really good that we have a performance standard in that contract. When we put some of these BMPs in place several years ago, we didn't have performance standards. So I think it's to our advantage to have that in there so we can have some accountability related back to it because of this cooperative agreement. And Rachel's got a lot of experience in permitting, so she might have some additional insights to add also.
Yeah, I'm glad the performance measurement is in there. I'm just trying to understand the timeframe and the wiggle room that it may take to get to that reduction of eight pounds.
I think the initial project is intended to get to eight pounds at minimum. Remember, there's the Phase One of the cooperative agreement and the Phase Two of the cooperative agreement. And Phase One is solutions that should take place in Edina that should work and get us to that eight pounds. And the second phase is generating ideas on bigger projects. So at minimum, we should get the eight pounds, and then, and that should be, we don't have timelines right now, but the idea would be that it would be implemented, you know, as soon as it's feasible. And then, to me, that clause is a performance standard where if, during that first 10 years, if we're not consistently hitting that 10 pounds, then Edina would need to go back to the drawing table and do an additional project to make sure they're getting to the eight pounds.
That's helpful. When is Edina planning to start this up? And then, when are we going to start measuring what they're doing? I know you said maybe that piece of the timetable you don't have, but maybe you can tell us when Edina is going to be ready to go.
The project construction is phased, and the actual flood mitigation project, it might be a couple of years down the road until they're ready to operate the system to its optimal level, but the construction has already started.
Okay. And one other related question to the map that we saw earlier. I'd like to understand if the water process to Bade Makaska went through city pipes, city storm steward, and so it'll still take that same route? Okay. And is there any fees that they pay for storm sewer routage through our pipes?
I believe when Edina would have connected to the city of Minneapolis system, there may have been an agreement at that point, but that piece would be between the city of Minneapolis Public Works and the city of Edina.
Okay. Commissioner Musich, are you taking notes? No, really, I mean, if this is a rerouting of pipes or a change, is this a point for the city of Minneapolis to go back to Edina and say, hey, you paid this fee when you set this up, now you're changing it, and we are going to route this money to NPRB to pay the $15,000? No, I'm asking a kind of a serious question. Do you think there's any grounds for that? Maybe you can't speak to that. That might be out of your scope.
The public works and the city of Minneapolis and Edina may have their own process.
Yeah, yeah. I will ask. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Musich. And that is it. Thank you very much.
President Forney?
Thank you for letting me speak on this. And in fact, there was just more question. Is this piping pre-existing from when Minneapolis owned all of that property?
The routing of the water is really complex, where there's water that's actually going into St. Louis Park and then back to Edina before it goes to Minneapolis. But there, in Minneapolis, there won't be new piping. The project takes place, the changes to pipes take place in Edina at this point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Musich?
Thank you for calling on me for a second time. I apologize for speaking out of turn. I just wanted to say that, yes, I will add to my list of things to ask Chair Johnson and Co-Chair Kosky about this project. So I will, I'll circle back with everyone when I have more information. Thanks.
May I just ask, is it, is this one of the things where we caught something going on and went to them, and if we hadn't, they would have just done this and there would be nothing for us to have?
Chair Thompson, there's no way for us to know for certain. We did catch it, though, and I think it points to the fact that our environment management staff has to continue to be vigilant because this kind of thing, as we lie in the lower end of the watershed, lowest end of the watershed, could be happening a lot if this is successful.
Has this type of thing happened to us in the past, but it's just almost until it's already happened that we even hear about it further up the watershed?
So probably one of the more recent examples of where we were impacted by some kind of water management that we didn't authorize was at the Lake and Knox property in Uptown where there was a discovery of an illegal connection to the Minneapolis Stormwater System that was coming in at the lagoon between Bade Makaska and Lake of the Isles. That was a construction-related project that wasn't a municipal project. But, you know, the city of Minneapolis was in conversations for a while with the city of Edina and the MCWD on the project, and they did also give us a heads-up late last year in August and September or maybe October, I think, Michael, I can't even remember. I'd have to look at my meeting notes. But they said, you know, you guys need to be aware of this project, too. And it was, there was a lot of things happening very quickly that weren't being, that we didn't find out about until late and had to really push for information. So I think it's good that we're pushing and we're asking questions, and we're hoping that with this cooperative agreement, we can maybe get something better.
May I ask one more question, and whomever can answer it? It seems to me that there's, like, there's not, we don't have any, how shall I phrase this? In terms of our lake and our water quality and the water quality of our lakes, I would assume everyone would like them to be wonderful, right? So what kind of teeth do we have, or does the watershed have, to say, you are now elevating this to toxic levels and you have to stop? Like, since we don't necessarily know the impact, do we have any other recourse to get them to resolve it before, I know I just was told that construction's already underway, but before these things ever go, like studying for a test rather than just showing up and taking it and then failing?
I'm going to say one thing, and then you can offer more. Chair Thompson, I think we are at the point where we are right now, as, not as a result of some technical ability to exert some authority, but rather, I mentioned earlier a few clever calls. It was a political motivation on the part of the city of Edina to make certain that they were participating the right way in this project, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. So is, one last question before, it seems like there's no other lights and we'll take a vote. Is there, is this the best we can get out of this situation in your wise and well-known opinions?
Chair Thompson, the minimum threshold we walked into, knowing that there was going to be pollution, is a neutral position for Bade Makaska. We have the opportunity to make a significant potentially enhancement of that. So this is a good opportunity for us, and I think, as we've talked about it, and I'll refresh this idea, we have lots of places where we could be exerting energy. The opportunity for us to collaborate with a partner to do something better than we could do on our own is significant. So this is, in a way, opportunistic for us, and I think we need to continue to look for those opportunities.
Okay. That sounds good. Yes, please.
I mean, I've been aware of this since the fall. I've worked with Rachel, Michael, and Deb on it, and I think Mr. Schroeder stated accurately. I think for the board members, what you should take away from this is it's a bit beyond your control to this extent. The city of Minneapolis has an elaborate stormwater sewer system that feeds into your lakes. You're responsible for the lakes. The Bade Makaska Southwest Clean Water Partnership Agreement is 20, 25 years old, and it has done very well, but basically, Edina is redeveloping a huge property, taking down 1,000 trees and what used to be city of Minneapolis land, dealing with water issues in their city and putting it into Minneapolis pipes. And Minneapolis system puts it into your lakes. And the connection is the one that Commissioner Schaefer was talking about, is that Minneapolis, on whatever basis, is the one that has the ability, the city of Minneapolis Public Works would have much more authority over what happens than you do. And I think all the effort that your staff has done is to try to make what could be or what will be or likely will be a very bad situation better. I think the only other alternative that you could have, Ms. Pilger referenced the Lake and Knox matter, which was litigation where a builder went ahead and started putting water into a storm sewer, stormwater system that fed into the lagoon that was eroding the ice, eroding other things, adding pollutants potentially. There was a long litigation that was expensive that we were on the same side of the city on. But you're the stewards of the lakes, but you're not the stewards of the stormwater system, hence Commissioner Musich's appeal. But, well, it's getting late, and I could go on and on, but I have opinions about, you know, they were the doormat for the city's stormwater, now we're the doormat for Edina's water with no money.
I'm glad you said it because I was wanting to. So now it can just come out of your mouth. I would like to say, Commissioner Musich, if you're looking for people to sign up for your, like, Public Works enchantment, I will do that. Oh, Commissioner Benet?
Just one more quick thing, and thank you again for letting me speak. I'm not on this committee, but in case the $15,000 is a concern, I would encourage that my colleagues to think about that that buys us a place at the table to advocate for the lake and an outcome that works for us. And not just the lake, but our pretreatment system near the lake. So I think it's a worthwhile thing, and if this passes through this committee, I'll certainly be supporting it as it comes before the board.
All right. No other lights? Are you, no? Okay. We could talk all night. So, all of those in favor of Resolution 2022-196, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay, that passes. Last item on the docket, Resolution 2022-169, Resolution approving a one-year programming and lease agreement with the Minneapolis Sailing Center to expire on December 31, 2023. And I believe there might be an amendment to this.
Yes, Co-Chair Schaefer?
Yes, I'd like to put forth a motion to propose this amendment. Whereas this Minneapolis Sailing School will have no access to the Circle Drive drop-off area during the refectory construction, whereas Parks for All strategies include ensure events remain safe and strengthen our relationships with partner organizations. Resolved to amend the sailing school lease to direct staff to repaint the crosswalks at 31st Street and East Bade Makaska Parkway to facilitate safe crossing to the Minneapolis Sailing School prior to the start of programming, and to similarly repaint all other crosswalks on Bade Makaska Parkway to facilitate safe crossings, and to direct staff to mark with signs up to three parking spaces proximate to the intersection of 31st and East Bade Makaska Parkway for use by the Sailing School drop-off and pickup of Sailing School program participants between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. and during such period as the refectory is under construction. Thank you.
Fantastic. Any discussion on the amendment? Yes, Commissioner Menz?
Thank you. Let me speak. I guess I'm on the committee. So, Commissioner Schaefer, is there a reason why we need all those additions for this sailing school?
Normally, the sailing school uses the Circle Drive, and that's going to be full of construction equipment. And if you have ever driven down East And if you have ever driven down East Bide Makaska, there's, the main drop-off is going to be right at 31st and the Parkway, which is the main entrance to the beach. There's nowhere, if you're coming south on that road, you're going to be blocking traffic to let kids off. And so the only place, and there's no crosswalks there. If you drive 31st, 32nd, 33rd, they're completely erased. There's no crosswalks at any of those locations. So for the safety of the, everybody being dropped off at 31st this season and probably most of next season, I think it's important for the neighborhood and for the participants.
Thanks.
Yes, President Forney.
Thank you. I also am not on this committee and appreciate being able to speak to this. I think this is a worthy amendment, and I just want you to know that staff has been trying to accommodate all the various issues that are going to happen with this construction. And one of the things that I have expressed is that the launch ramp, whatever it's called, is going to be closed for the entire season, and I have encouraged that we should look for an alternative place for the ramp because of these issues that are being brought up. How do we accommodate, you know, for the Sailing School, et cetera? But I know that staff is on top of it, but I appreciate the amendment, and I think it's a worthy thing to support.
I just, I appreciate Co-Chair Schaefer throwing that in there. I will anecdotally say that Victory Memorial Drive was beautifully redone in 2011 with reflective crosswalks all across the drive. For whatever reason, they redid the Parkway the following summer and covered it all over, and it has never gotten back. And it's that attention to detail that I really appreciate, that you're paying attention to because it's never gotten fixed up. That's fine, but like, but my point is that sometimes these big projects, we lose sight of the little day-to-day, moment-to-moment, how it impacts our community. So I just appreciate you putting eyes on that and being mindful in such a way. So unless there's other comments, this is a vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. So the amendment passes. And any comments, questions, otherwise, on the resolution itself for the Sailing School, Sailing Center? All right. Let's vote on Resolution 2022-169. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? No, that passes, I believe. We can say this is adjourned?
Declared adjourned.
It's declared adjourned. Thank you very much. Before 10 o'clock.
Looks like we made it.